I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you very much. Welcome to our meeting tonight. Thank you for taking the time to join us. As part of the CNUSD COVID prevention plan, we require that you practice physical distancing of six feet apart and wear a face covering at all times, even when addressing the board during public comment. Face coverings should cover the mouth and nose. Thank you very much. All right, presentations to the board. Dr. Simon.
Thank you, Mr. Pollak and the board. Thank you for your time this evening. To kick off our equity presentation, we are going to start with our student from Eleanor Roosevelt High School, Natalia Roman. She will be delivering a speech surely to impress.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Natalia Roman and I am from Eleanor Roosevelt High School. I will be presenting a speech about the vitality of ethnic studies. A story, an antidote, a dream, a poem written by me looking in the country in the 21st century and conveying my perspective of a country in a rapacious cycle of indifference. The wall that bounds our mind is cracking as each voice is heard, as each whisper passes from room to room until our youth find their voice intertwined in its passion. Our separation settles down with the noise bounded by the broken promises and the distress of the forgotten. As trees of willow fall into the ocean side into the mouth of children who are tearing off the chain on their tongue, the swallowed hopes and dreams engulf their hope of a new generation of understanding. The tightness wraps their arms around back to spring amongst forward into the riot pounding in the streets below. The quietness built up in their voice thrones through a raid of locked doors seizing the sight of a vibrant beam of light. The tender whispers are shared from room to room until it bounces off the wall of an empire encased in a new generation of bodies tired of being bounded by silence. A moment of silence, a moment of silence divides the countries being engulfed in the lost hope of our country. A moment of silence transforms passion into obfuscation. A moment of silence and lack of communication is a repeated process in the state of our country, that state in which it's modified our political party to be divisive instead of united. The division between our political parties and social ideologies relieves a gap within solutions and compromises. A survey conducted by the BBC reveals that 84% of Americans believe that the United States is divided. Acknowledgement and acceptance need to become the focal point of our ideologies and seeing each other's views with embrace instead of dismiss is what will truly allow for a world to prosper for the better. The root of our citizens' journey begins with the education institution in which they attend. The abundance of information absorbed collectively shapes the minds of our youth and impacts their opinions in ways that are so prominent, it is incomprehensible to say verbally. As stated by Education World in their research on the importance of education and child development, education is responsible for the economic, social, and political development of society. While the information absorbed plays a large factor into the influence and the impressionable, when pieces of vital information aren't being relayed, that lack of acknowledgement in low and known details leaves an empty cascade of unreceived recognition. The type of knowledge I'm referring to is the knowledge of ethnic writers, storytellers, and the knowledge of history misplaced and forgotten about in our history books. The lack of acknowledgement for ethnic history and education on minority cultures and lifestyles is a prominent issue among our nation. According to The Atlantic, the students' viewing review of a nearly 2,000-page history book found that less than 5% of that book was dedicated to the contributions of people of color. If textbooks are supposed to be an educational tool for our students to use, then why is it only allowing a small percentage of our world's knowledge into the minds of our students? Education is a gateway towards a journey of learning and realization. Implementing courses and subjects that allow others to take a glimpse into others' ideologies and lifestyles will offer more connection and more understanding to occur. This type of acceptance and acknowledgement is a moral that needs to be implemented in our youth as soon as we become a member of society. So, understanding can open up the minds for those to find value and connection instead of competition. Understanding can open a divide of gap that has been split within our country for too long. The silent voices of our country have had their stories ripped out of pages. The only way to resolve this is to rewrite it. And that power is something that we hold within our hands by using ambition and grit to educate ourselves on the knowledge unspoken in our classrooms. And while they say that whisper can begin to change, it is vital to recognize the knowledge is what will fuel it. Thank you.
Excuse me, what grade are you in?
I'm in ninth grade.
Ninth grade. Great, great job. That's awesome. That's incredible. How long did it take you to develop?
Well, I came up with the idea and it felt something that I was really passionate about and I really wanted to convey it. And it was actually written for a competition in which I entered about an essay that really inspires change and is something that is passionate, that you're passionate about in your bones. And this is something that felt true to me. And I knew that after I finished the speech that it was something that I wanted to speak to as many people as possible in order to initiate a change within my school and within my culture and hopefully within our country. And it took me about a week to write. And I'm very happy that you allowed me to speak it today and present it in front of you. So, thank you.
Well, you could hear your heart and your passion in those words. It was just very, very incredible. So, thank you so much. I know, Ms. Marakine.
Thank you for coming back. About two months ago, Dr. Bee and I saw you at the Eastville Community. And we heard you and we thought it would be great for everyone to hear your speech again. So, thank you for that. And that is something that we are guiding, our curriculum is trying to get more information out so people can understand the different cultures in which we actually have around us and should be grateful for. So, thank you so much for your heartfelt, like you said, I agree. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much again.
Ms. Barra.
No, most definitely I would want it to be shared.
We're so proud of Natalia and she represents the greatness of our students who have voiced a desire to have, you know, the school district work in the area of equity. And Mr. Pollak and the board, as you stated early in 2020, that you wanted us to continue the work and provide you with updates. And so, that's what we're going to do this evening. We're going to give you a progress report of the work we've done thus far. I'm going to introduce Carlos at this time. Carlos will be doing the formal introductions of the presenters this evening. We're very thankful to have Nicole Anderson here tonight. And she's a consultant working very closely with us. And Carlos will be sharing Nicole's background. But we have a presentation. First, we're going to show you some updates that the district participants have been involved in. And then Ms. Anderson will be walking us through some work this evening. So, with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Flores.
Good evening, board. Thank you. So, a little bit about Nicole Anderson. She was the ACHA, the Association of Administrators, first executive director around diversity and inclusion. And for the last few years, she's been working with a number of districts across the state, including California School Board Association. So, we do have a great relationship with her. And you'll see some of her work later today. Right now, before we start her presentation, we'd like to give you a progress report on a number of different sort of pieces that we've been working alongside Nicole Anderson, but really moving that work forward. And our theme today is really this idea of our work around equity is around student well-being. And we want to ensure that our students are well, that they're doing well both academically and socially emotionally. But we also want this work of equity to improve outcomes in the classroom, but also the playground, how our kids feel when they're at school, how they feel welcomed at school. So, on that note, we're going to go ahead and get started. And so, as you remember, Mr. Pollak, over the summer, the board heard from a number of different constituents, both teachers, staff, parents, really asking around the district's vision for equity. And so, what we did is I met with them, I met with teachers, I met with parents, I met with students, and we did a series of listening sessions. And really, the goal of that was to tweak or refine our equity efforts, really making sure it met the needs of our community and met the needs of our students. So, we had a series of listening sessions. They were conducted via Zoom. Dr. Bern Rostro and Dr. Simon joined us for many of those to really just listen, really listen. And some of the questions were hard, hard questions and difficult conversations. But the goal was really to listen and really understand what our community was saying to us. And so, I'll give you an update on that. From that, we really continued our equity work. And what you will see tonight is an alignment of the work we're doing with those listening sessions, really aligning that work to the needs of our community. And last but not least, you'll get an understanding of where we are as it relates to moving this work to the school sites with teacher leadership, with classified leadership, because this work is best led and supported at the school site with district and board support. So, on that note, I'm going to walk you through some of the listening sessions. So, the focus there was really about understanding the needs. Here were four emerging themes. The first one was a desire from our community to ensure that we were committed to inclusion. Another big theme was this idea of professional development, really investing in our employees, both at the certificated and classified level around professional development themes focused on equity and equitable outcomes. Another big emerging theme was an idea that by and large, our community is very impressed and happy with the academic outcomes of our district. We know our students are achieving well, but they also want to ensure that we live up to that second pillar, really that social-emotional learning. And that's where we got a lot of feedback around improving the experiences of our students in the classroom and schoolyard setting, right? And the last one was this idea of leadership development, ensuring that the district really leads on equitable outcomes and on equity and inclusion. And they really wanted to see that this is work that wasn't relegated to one department, but really multi-divisional across the district with strong district leadership. So, those were our four emerging themes. All right, so some action items. So, part of the work and one of the themes is we don't want just talk or we don't want just rhetoric. We really want to see an impact. And so, what you'll see tonight is an update on a number of different topics, but you'll see that they're all related around this idea of equity and well-being of students. And so, you're going to hear about EMOJA, a program that's the first in the nation with the high school component. You're going to understand a little bit more about our work to diversify the text. You heard a little bit of that in Natalia's speech today. Also, ethnic studies and where the district is leading that work around ethnic studies. Some work around our counselors. Our counselors are an important part of our district. Our district community really values the role of our counselors. And so, they are learning this work alongside us as well. And three other themes was this idea of professional development around equity at the teacher level. Our teachers really ask for specific strategies. What does this look like in the classroom? So, we're doing some of that work. And the other theme is an idea of celebrating diversity, ensuring that we as a district move that work forward because we are a diverse community. And we want to make sure everyone, all of our stakeholders, see their faces and their voices in our school efforts and our instruction. And the last piece there is an idea of principal leadership that's really going to front-load us to what the next few years are going to look like. So, on that note, I'm going to introduce Dr. Goins. And he's going to walk us through the MTSS framework.
Good evening, President Pollak, board, and executive cabinet. So, we've been here recently talking about the MTSS framework with you. And we just want to make the point that MTSS, we see that as a framework for equity, right? Because we need to ensure that all of our students get what they need. And so, we need to have common assurances for students. And then, for those students that aren't getting what they need, we need to have systems that will push them to those other rings where we can really catch our students and make sure no one falls through the cracks. So, EMOJA is a program, as you know, that exists at Eleanor Roosevelt High School and Centennial High School. Very proud of that program as it is the first in the nation at the high school level. It was born out of partnership we had with Norco College. EMOJA is a program that lives at the community colleges throughout our state and has been so successful at supporting our African-American students in progressing through college through focusing on the African-American diaspora and having culturally responsive pedagogy and extra counseling support. And it's done so well that it's moved on to the CSUs and the UCs. And so, we really listened to our students over the summer. And they said, "We really wanted a program that supports our history." And so, we went towards, we examined other programs that we have, like Puente, as an excellent example of a program that uses culturally responsive pedagogy to support our students. And so, since EMOJA does that as well, we collaborated with EMOJA and said, "How can we build a high school program?" And we came to Executive Cabinet, brought an MOU to you. And thank you for your support on that. And really worked with our educators, both at Norco College and CNUSD, on making a robust program for our students. And so, it's living now. Our students are doing the work. And just want to thank the folks at the site, our staff, our teaching and counseling staff, our administrative staff, that really have built this program from the ground up and to support our students. I get to pass the mic tonight to Kim Kemmer, who along with Dr. Gelslechter is doing great work about diversifying the narrative and texts.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm Kim Kemmer. I'm an instructional coach here in Ed Services. And so, I've been doing some work investigating our curriculum. It is one area where our students are calling out for it to be a little bit more diverse and inclusive of the lives and the stories that they lead. So, that began with looking at what exists in our curriculum. And it was called out specifically in high school. So, that's where I started. So, our Pearson curriculum, our adopted curriculum is Pearson. It is in grades nine through 11. Through my investigation, it is a very robust curriculum and has a lot of BIPOC offerings, which stands for Black Indigenous People of Color. So, there is a lot to offer within that curriculum. It is just one component that makes up the curriculum of high school. We also have something called ERWC. We see sprinklings of ERWC in grades nine through 11. It is our exclusive Gen Ed 12th grade course. And it is a completely robust and inclusive curriculum. It just underwent a major revision. It has pathways specific to social justice at STEM. So, they've done a lot of work kind of updating and modifying their curriculum to become very culturally responsive. The other area that we investigated was our novel choices. And our novel choices, as you can see from this little snapshot I provided you, this is first semester, a freshman year. It does tend to follow within the literary canon. And that seems to be what our students are calling out, is a need for revision. So, just in this basic snapshot, you can see we have Lord of the Flies, The Hunger Games, The Road, and The Pearl. Not a whole lot of diversity there. So, what we've committed to do is to really listen to our students. And we are beginning to adopt new novels that can be immersed into our curriculum. So, to date, we have three that we have purchased. We have The Poet Ex by Elizabeth Acevedo. It is our first ever novel in verse, which is really exciting for me. We have All American Boys, which is by Jason Reynolds. And Brendan Kylie is a co-written piece, which is a beautiful text written by a black and white author. And then, we have Just Mercy, which is written by a civil rights attorney and activist. It's a nonfiction text kind of exploring our criminal justice system. So, today, we have one novel for every student. It is our hope that within the PLC model, our teachers can really build capacity within their teams and feel comfortable teaching these texts so that we can provide a more diverse curriculum for students. Thank you. Pass it off to Pablo.
Good evening, board. So, ethnic studies. The movement of ethnic studies in terms of the curriculum being offered in our high schools, that's not new. It's been around for a number of years now and where school districts have adopted it in either a form of an elective or even as aggressive as a graduation requirement. Last January 27th, Assembly Bill 101 was introduced by Assemblyman Medina. And there was a press conference where our governor as well as our state superintendent basically promised that this is going to pass into law here shortly. As late as last Thursday, the California Department of Education approved a set of curriculum standards frameworks. It's really what they've done for ethnic studies. What they're looking at is a one semester course. And it could be, if passed into law this April, it would be a graduation requirement, one semester long graduation requirement, and starting with class as soon as the seniors of class of 29. And so, ahead of that, we have a group of teachers who have been working on developing the curriculum. Now, they are working on aligning the curriculum with the new frameworks that just came out. And we're going to have more information for you coming in the near future. With that, I'm going to bring up Ms. Anita Shirley.
Good evening, board. So, I have mentioned before that we, the school counselors, have been working with our consultant, Hatching Results. And as a result of working with them, one of the items that they were able to offer to our counselors was some anti-racist training. And so, this year, the work that we have been able to do with our Hatching Results trainers is some professional learning. And that professional learning is being offered over four days. We still have one day left. We've engaged in three days of professional learning. The first two days is kind of an inside-out approach. So, the first two days are really working on the inside. What are my implicit biases? Really doing some reflection work on who I am, why am I the way I am, what are my beliefs? And then, the last two days, our work on the outside. What are some data sets that we need to look at? What are some things that are going on in our district to really reflect on the work that we are doing here in our district to make sure that we are reaching all of our students? We're trying to transform the mindsets of our counselors along with our school sites. We're building district capacity and supporting systemic change. So, it's really exciting work that we've been able to engage with them. And this is a TK-12 professional learning that we've been able to offer for them. So, it is happening across the district for all, and the work will be happening at all of our school sites. I'm going to bring up Tricia.
Hello. Okay, so I'm going to be talking about some of the Equity PD that we are starting. We have, this is our year three of the Supporting Inclusive Practices Grant. The grants through California Department of Education in conjunction with Riverside County Office of Education. We're on our year three of the grant. And we're using the money specifically this year to get a large group of our educators trained in equity by design. So, it started this month. Currently, I think we have about 100 to 150 people attending directly from our district. We're in combination with other schools across Riverside County in the training. It's five different sessions throughout the month of March. We're about halfway through right now. And it has been amazing thus far. But we're going to keep the momentum going on it by a book study after this that we're going to be offering to the staff and other staff. I will tell you a little bit about some of the things that they're covering because I know one of the big things that we want to talk about when it comes to creating inclusive practices within our classrooms is how are we universally designing lessons for all students? The best way to describe it is if you look at life through a special education lens, you're going to hit every student, right? If you go for the ones that are hardest to teach, you're going to hit everyone. So, that's where we want to go with this. Some of the things that they specifically already talked about in the training, I had to write notes because there were so many things. But some of the things they talked about, and it was great, the role of student feedback. So, like we heard tonight, how do we incorporate our student voices? And how do we get things out of them so that then we can put that back into our lesson? So, great example tonight, she came to us with her story. We need to figure out how to draw those stories out from students more often. Another thing they talked about is the idea of intentions versus outcomes. So, how are teachers saying, "This is what I want to get out of the lesson, but this is what I actually got out of the lesson." And how are we making adjustments in that? That was another thing, another great one. Best way to describe it is how do you plan for a buffet, right? A buffet has a little bit of everything. So, if I told you all, "We are having pasta tonight and everybody here is having pasta," some people in the room are not going to be able to eat it, right? But if I had a salad bar set up, probably everybody in here would find something to eat. So, same idea is how do we create a selection for students so that they can all make sure they have something that they can eat? So, at school, have something that they can learn. And the best part that they did talk about is increasing students' executive functioning. So, all students need to be able to know how to plan and move through activities. So, on this one is teaching teachers. What's the best way to increase that in students? So, it's been a great training thus far. And we're going to keep going with it, like I said, in the book study. Thank you. And I'm going to bring up Myra on Celebrating Diversity.
Good evening, board and executive cabinet. I'm just here to represent my EL and Equity team. We have been providing resources for teachers during distance learning. We know that teachers are very stressed. They were making their own lessons, at times slide decks that were taking a lot of time for them. So, we wanted to create something for Black History Month, Women's History Month, Chinese New Year, that they could easily use in the classroom right away, that it wasn't going to take any prep time for them to do it, that they were ready-made. And so, some of the resources that we created, we made sure that we vetted them for age appropriateness, for historically accurate, free of bias, and from reputable sources. So, some of the slide decks that we created, as seen on this slide here, are available for K-12. And we made sure that we focused on heroes of those communities and maybe even like the history behind like women's history, the suffrage movement, things like that, so that women, Black Americans, Chinese Americans would see themselves in the lessons. And so, we have received very good feedback from these slide decks. As you can see here, some of these teachers are emailing us. We know they don't have time, but they took the time to email us and tell us that this is exactly what they needed, something that was ready-made and easy to adapt. So, that's something our department is doing. We're also looking into, Kim, today, we were talking about possibly in the month of April, doing something with poets from different ethnicities. And in the month of May to end the year, something with Asian Pacific Islander Month. So, that's kind of some of the work that is immediately being used in the classrooms.
A lot of information, but I think it's a lot of work to be proud of as a district. The next phase is really around principal leadership. And so, what does that look like as it relates to equity? And so, we really believe that the work of equity is best led at the site level. And the reason for that is because a site-based approach will allow us to differentiate our approach. We know that all schools are different. We serve different communities. We also know there's a different level of readiness to do this work. So, we want to respect that, right? The other piece is that a site-based approach really lends itself to collaboration. And this idea of co-laboring with teachers and employees and classified members so that they are part of that work, right? It's work that they do engage in, right? And it allows for a very process-driven approach for those sites. Two other points around this site-based approach is it ensures that it's inclusive because we serve a diverse community. So, we want to hear all of those voices. And it allows the sites to set a timeline that's reasonable. We know our sites, especially now, are already doing a lot. Equity is not one more thing. Equity really is a mindset. It's an approach to the work. And last but not least, we want to ensure that our equity efforts have an impact in the classroom. And we heard a little bit of that equity by design work, right? We saw it in some of the slides and slide decks that were created. But we also know that we want to make a difference in the schoolyard. And we heard a little bit around programs like EMOJA and the work and the important role that counselors play in that. And so, what you saw tonight is that for all of those common themes that we heard at the beginning of presentation, the district is responding. It's certainly not enough, but the work is underway. And so, just a timeline. So, right now, we currently have 11 site principals that are engaged monthly, meeting with Nicole Anderson, really around where are they at, building their leadership capacity. And then in June, we're going to bring on fifteen additional site principals. And then by January twenty-sixth, so that would be all fifty-one schools roughly. And so the goal is that while our approach may vary a little bit because we want to ensure it's a site-based approach, the value system that will drive this work is this idea that this is really work around student well-being. And if we recognize that this is about student well-being, then it requires us as a district to respond accordingly because some students are less well than others, right? So how do we respond? And so on that note, I'm going to bring up Dr. Buenrosto, who's going to close this presentation out for us.
Thank you, Carlos, for this presentation and all of our folks that presented this evening. You know, it was kind of a little bit of rapid fire out there, but just to give you a snapshot of the work that's being done, I might remind everyone during the pandemic. So kudos to our staff for being proactive. The the themes of collaboration, celebration of diversity, you have a lot of research behind this, a lot of practice, and ultimately building capacity because we know that the challenges of diversity, as we know, we dealt with them last summer, they're not going to go away. They're going to come from time to time, but you know, the diversity is a great strength that we have in our community. So I want to give Carlos again and the team kudos for all the work that they've done. And lastly, I do like the way it finished up, which is ultimately it's for our students and for our students. And we do know we have that diverse community that we're so proud of and everyone's a different place. But I think the way it's laid out, it's very strategic. So kudos to Dr. Simon and the entire team. Great job. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Simon, who will introduce Nicole Anderson.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce Nicole Anderson. She is a wonderful consultant, and I know you had a formal introduction of Nicole a few minutes ago. I just wanted to let you know that Nicole did work with Executive Cabinet two weeks ago, actually a month ago. We've had two training sessions and it's just a pleasure to work with Nicole. And we're looking forward to Nicole this evening as well. So Nicole, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. I waved to you all the way from Vallejo, California, way up here and sunny so far today. But I really hate that I can't be there with you in person, but just want to thank you for allowing me to share this space for a short period of time with you today. Want to acknowledge all the trustees and just appreciate you taking a moment out of the day to just do a little bit of our kind of what I call study session time, a little bit of overview of what this looks like in regards to how to support governance and supporting all the great work that you just heard about. I mean, amazing presentations. I have the distinct pleasure of working with quite a number of districts, their school boards, their superintendents, their executive cabinets, teachers, principals, you name it. And I have to say, I really, really applaud you on your vision for doing this work with intentionality across your district. And so before I jump in, I want to say hello again. Mary, it's good to see you from a distance. John, good to see you. I just appreciate, you know, being able to connect with you all. How many years? About three years ago now, I think it was, way up in Sacramento with CSBA, where I had the distinct pleasure of beginning to develop a Equity Network, which to this day is still evolving. So I want you to just give you that update. You should be very proud of the work that you gave input on, and so thank you for that. Again, it's so good to see all of you as the trustees. I usually call it the fearless trustees of Corona Norco Unified School District. Just want to acknowledge the governance work that you've done, the staff that you have there. Dr. Buenrosto, thank you for your just leadership and vision on this work. But I want to start with this, just a little bit about who I am, because I know also as you engage in this work, you've invited me into your community, and so I don't take that lightly. And I want to make sure the community also knows who this strange lady is from Northern California who's hanging out with you all and hanging out with the principals tomorrow and continuously working with the Executive Cabinet and parents and you name it. But I come to you again from Vallejo, and I have the distinct pleasure of coming from lineage of a gentleman named Jesse Bethel. And I share this because my story will make sense in where I'm connecting the work we're going to talk about tonight. Jesse Bethel is my grandfather, and there happens to be a high school named after him in Vallejo. And he happened to do a lot of firsts for African-Americans. One was he was the first African-American school board member to become president for Vallejo Unified School District, which is where I actually cut my teeth as a teacher and got to work at his high school. And then what's interesting, I learned later that he was the first CSBA president in terms of an African-American. So there's a lot of history that I got to come from, and I've come from a humble place because I recognize I'm standing here on his shoulders. And so the why of the work I'm going to do with you tonight and beyond and with your district is centered around that story of a person who really advocated for this work from the governance space, just like you, but also had some non-closure in his journey and not seeing that full closure. And so I take great pride in continuously continuing this journey all across California and also in several other states where I have the distinct pleasure of locking arms with educators to really close educational gaps and do that in on a journey where we can literally come together and start to see systemic change at last. One of my most exciting experiences recently is from moving from that, you know, teacher space into principal space. I was at the high school at the elementary level, but I got snatched out of that pipeline called superintendency. And I was on my way, fast-tracked, and I ended up at a place called AXA, the Association of California School Administrators, where I got to really have the distinct pleasure of working with districts all around the state of California to advance this work. So I say that because some of my connections to Corona Norco came from that space even before CSBA. And so I also say it because you should be celebrating that what I'm going to talk about tonight is not the beginning of your equity journey, as you know. It's really more of a celebration of the work you've done. And also it's about how do we take this work to a deeper level through the lens of governance and of course, a vision all across your school district. So again, I don't take that lightly. But tonight, what I want to do, I'm going to share a little bit with you around just kind of an overview of what this work looks like in terms of all the great things. I was just kind of writing down, being reminded of hearing all the presentations, the great work that's being done with your students, your teachers, your counselors, you name it. I mean, it's amazing. But then I kept going, well, what about the governance team, right? So this is really about you today. As I'm working with governance teams, I always say how important it is to come together and be able to learn together. A lot of times we have a lot of noise reopening schools, right? It's a big deal all over the state and all over the nation. But sometimes we don't have time to just pause and just do some professional learning together so that we can continue to support this work. And so tonight, I want to give you just kind of a snapshot of that's okay, of the work that is planned. I know we have some time on the calendar together in April and potentially time on the calendar in the kind of early summer to look at more of like retreat time. And of course, there's plans to continue to explore what does this look like moving forward into the new school year. But for tonight, I want to do just a snapshot and just give you a sense of what kind of this looks like. It's a snapshot of what some of your administrators, your teachers, those that I'm working with are getting exposed to, but I really want to give that to you in the lens of governance. Okay? And so tonight, feel free, I know you all are distant from me and I know it's really hard to interact, but please feel free at any moment to ask questions, to jump in and share perspectives. I always like it to be interactive, and even though tonight is a presentation, I do want to give you an opportunity to engage in a couple of the concepts and just give you a snapshot of what we're going to do, especially moving into our first session on April tenth. Does that sound all right? All right. Good, good. I can see it as much as it's close, but you all are so far away. So make sure you give me some hand signals, whatever you got to do to make sure you get my attention too. All right. So what I'm going to do is share my screen and I'm going to share a few slides with you. Please let me know if this is visible. It's hard for me to tell from my angle, so I just want to make sure I can see you all, okay? Just maybe give me President Pollock, can you just give me a wave?
Yeah, it looks good. It looks good.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right. So just giving you a snapshot of this concept of what we call effective governance with an equity lens. Okay? And there are many boards all over the state right now who are engaging in this work in such an amazing, exciting way. And what I'm most, you know, excited about is even in the midst of these storms, like I call it two pandemics happening, right? It's like COVID nineteen has taken a toll on our communities. And then we have racism, right? And so when you add those two pandemics, it's like really been hard. Reopening schools and just really trying to figure out how do we do this work with an equity lens in the midst of like unprecedented times? And so I care deeply about my board member colleagues because this is hard work and sometimes even the community doesn't understand how hard this is. But I want to just also have you think about some hope for the future because this work can be very daunting. And Frederick Douglass, this quote just sticks out to me a lot. I've been sharing it the last couple of weeks around this concept of like, we have the most exciting time in the history of public education as governance teams to think about our roles and how we support this work. And when you think about his quote, you know, it's easier to build strong children than to repair broken men. I add women and people, right? Literally, we're in a space of educating kids. You heard some great things about diversifying our narrative and the text and really creating an experience for kids where we celebrate value diversity. Those are ways that we strengthen our children because they become grownups and they go into a society where we've seen some ugliness happen around us all over, not only our nation, our world. And some of that started when when people were young children. And guess where children get educated? Besides the family being the first teacher, it's in our space, right? In our education field. So I'm excited because I think we can make an impact and I hope you're excited too. And so I'm going to give you a couple of things to think about, then I'm going to have you kind of chime in in a moment and just give some feedback and questions that you have as you think about the work that we can do together moving forward. So with governance work, often the sessions that I work with teams on is really centered around this. Like I like Simon Sinek's Golden Circle because it reminds us about, I call it re-centering the work. Sometimes we've been doing governance so much, there's a lot going on, like how do we re-center, come together and remember what our why, our purposes? And it's really important with equity work that we that governance teams have a real clear vision and purpose that's unified when we talk about our why. And so we talk about how do we ensure that although all five of us, right, have our own kind of perspective around equity, but when we come together, I like to close my fist and say, now we're a team. And so our why has to always be when we re-center around equity work, very important. Because what it does is it impacts how we do our work, right? It impacts a lot of the things we do in terms of our norms, our protocols, the ways we operate as governance teams, working with our superintendent, very important work. But then it also affects the what we do, right? And so what we do is our actions, right? Those policies we put in place, those are the things that really kind of center around our core beliefs around equity. So I always think it's important to remember that. And some of the things that we'll cover in our sessions are just one, like understanding effective governance practices. So you all remember like CSBA Governance 101, right? And Nick Trainings and all the work you did when you go to the CSBA conferences? Literally, some of those things we have to go back to. And we call it re-centering because sometimes we get busy in governance and so we forget what those effective practices are to be a solid team. Because again, we're a team versus individuals and that's really hard as governance because equity is super emotional and passionate work, right? And it's it's people work, right? And so we have to remember is that effective practices are always what we focus on. The other piece is our roles. So this is really important. I kind of joke with our teams at times, you know, because we talk about like the role of superintendent, the role of the board, right? And we have these like two spaces. Sometimes we cross each other's lanes and we forget like where we're supposed to be. But I tell you, with equity work, because it gets so messy at times, sometimes we have to just re-center or remember like whose role is to be the visionary, whose role is it to do the work? And so it's always important just to go back to those great reminders when we talk about effective governance with an equity lens. But the other two things are a little bit harder. So one is just defining what equity is, right? And we're going to talk about that in a minute. But each of us has our individual definition. And then we have a collective definition that our entire district really needs to be clear on, right? I call it common language, common vision around what does equity means? And doing that through the policy lens, because as governance team members, you know that you operate at the policy level. But the harder part of the work is recognizing as well as responding to the barriers, right? There are going to be these things that get in the way of this work and how do we recognize them, get ahead of them? And then I call it be proactive. And then of course, how do we respond effectively? Because the barriers are there. There's no easy way to do this work. And so this is often where I get very, very excited about doing study sessions with board members, but also the individual coaching individually, because that's where this work is really most effective. And so this is kind of a big picture of what kind of the work looks like when we look at a typical session of doing governance. And so just to give you a little context, one thing that I always share with teams and every client I've ever worked with, I do not skip this step of the work, but as you all can imagine, equity work can be very, very sensitive, very emotional, very harmful. It can be in a place where it can just get really unsafe for people. I'm not sure, you know, several of you are like, you know, in different places, like in your term of your board terms. But when you think about all the professional development that's ever you've ever seen in your district or you've gone through, and sometimes professional learning hasn't always been a safe space, right? Especially when we talk about things like race and we talk about things that are really centered around equity. And so when those uncomfortable conversations start to show up, sometimes the work stops. It becomes unsafe. People may feel attacked. They may feel like they're not adequate to be in this space. And one thing that's very important is that we recognize it has to be safe. And so even as governance team members, right? This is really hard work because we're public officials, so we're out in the space where we have to do this work in public. And sometimes that can feel unsafe. And so I always want to make sure we have a space where it is safe for everyone to engage, but I also have to remind people that when we do this work, it is going to be uncomfortable. And so safety and comfort are two different things. And so when we talk about our work, I love using the four agreements to help with that. And so as we develop safe space, then we can get to a place of going to discomfort, but that discomfort creates the growth. And when there's growth, then you start to see brave space. People are starting to take action, right? We start to interrupt some of those practices that actually have not been serving all of our kids well. And so these four agreements are really great to think about. I'm not going to go in depth today. I just want to give you the overview. But we'll always come back to these to make sure we think about how do we ensure that we stay engaged in this work from a governance lens? How do we experience discomfort and knowing that discomfort creates growth and opportunity? Speaking truth is really important, like perspectives are important at the table to hear all perspectives, very, very critical, even when people's truths don't always line up. And in equity work, you're going to find that, right? That our truths are not always the same, and that's okay. That's okay. Because diversity, which is a fancy word for differences, right? Is where we have growth. It's actually strength in an organization. It's not necessarily a bad thing. And that's something we work on through our four agreements is how do we embrace truth even though it may be different from someone else's? And that's where the discomfort shows up. So how do we continue to stay engaged in that? And then the last one, which is so really, really important, I think for, you know, any of us who are really advocates and social justice warriors and warriorettes, right? There's many in your district who are like on fire to do this work. And the reality is after always remind us to be effective and seeing systemic change where we close equity gaps, we have to expect and accept non-closure. As you all very are well aware of, there are hundreds of years worth of inequities within the school system alone, let alone other institutions that kind of hold space for us. So at the end of the day, we want to make sure we're really clear that we're going to have some non-closure. It's going to be a little messy, right? There's not always going to be the answer tonight. As a governance team, you're going to have moments where you're going to have discussions about key policies that will have equitable impact. And you'll have to say like, maybe we need to table this and discuss it, do a study session, come back to it. And so it's okay to have non-closure, knowing that this is a journey, okay? And everything will not be solved overnight. And so it's important the community understands that concept too, that expecting and accepting non-closure with equity-focused work absolutely is required for this because we cannot solve everything in one night. So these four agreements are a great way to just do internal reminders and I'll definitely bring you back to these as we go through our sessions together. Okay? So just wanted to front-load a little bit about just setting the tone. Again, very important, we don't skip this step with any professional learning that happens in this area across your district. I always, always want to encourage you to ensure that everyone feels that they can enter and engage in this space no matter where they are in their journey. You got to meet people where they are. And so one way that I've shared this, I'm not going to go into depth, but I had a great opportunity to speak to your entire district and also to the principals in multiple groups to just have people reflect on how do we lead this work? And I love these quotes, which are always really amazing to just kind of help us reflect on like, like where do we sit in our equity leadership journey, right? Like who am I in this space? Because if I want to lead this work, then I got to think about how my messages land, how I bring people along, how I internalize some of the emotions with this work. These quotes really help us to just center and think about the reflection of our leadership journey. So we'll talk about that as a governance team in our future study session, is where are we individually with our roles and our feelings about how we lead this work? Because we're individuals, right? Cause we're individuals, right? We have individual leadership, but collectively, where are we as a team? And that's a really important space to, to reflect upon. So these are always great ones to think about too. Ruth Bader and John Lewis always give us some good things to ponder. Now, the bigger piece. The crux of most of the study session work that we do is centered around um, this really critical tool that I utilize to help boards reflect on kind of their journey to leading for equity. And one thing that you heard me mention earlier is that the key really to being effective in closing equity gaps. It's really around effective governance practices, like we can't skip that step. So when we think about what does effective mean? We think about the research from the Center of Public Education um, back in twenty eight, twenty eleven, I'm sorry. They have this um, interesting report and I shared it in your board packet. Um, where um, it talks about the eight characteristics of effective um, teams and it gives some examples. Um, he has some really good research case studies around where effectiveness has really made a difference in talking, addressing um, student achievement. And really focusing on the things that are most critical in a district. And so these eight characteristics, if you have it in front of you, um, it'd be really great to think about, you know, how do we kind of re-center our work and look at where are we on our journey with regards to, if you notice, number one and number two. Um, committing a vision, right? Committing to strong shared values. Both one and two are really important. We talk about equity work. Where are we with our common vision? And so often we talk about having an equity statement that we can go back to, having shared beliefs, shared statements that we provide. Your resolutions, a lot of times give like kind of this collective way of seeing like we have a common vision on equity. And also we have shared beliefs. And so as you kind of think about your own self-assessment, what we're gonna do in our deeper study sessions, we're gonna actually go through this, okay? Um, the school board's collaborative, right? Very important, like with equity work, we have to be collaborative, not only with our staff, but our community, right? Like it takes a village to raise a child. And so this concept is really important for effective governance. How do we ensure that we are collectively coming together? Um, and really communicating um, this work in an effective way. Okay, so very important piece of the work. A lot of this is gonna line back to your handbook, right? Some of the protocols and norms you have, but this is another piece of the assessment that we want to make sure we really unpack. Accountability, this is a big one. So we are accountable, accountability driven. And we spend less time on operational stuff and we spend more time focused on equity and policy around student achievement. And so I always laugh, you know, I'm kind of being sarcastic, but I tell you, when we do our deeper work in our study sessions, we talk about like, what does that look like? Because when we talk about the role of the superintendent, role of the board with equity work, like sometimes we will get very, very deep into the weeds, right? And the reality is that our role as a board is to really be at that visionary level, the policy level. Obviously, we have to look at where does student achievement land, because we're in the business to educate kids. But the operational stuff, that's for the superintendent, for the staff, right? And so effective governance teams don't spend a lot of time on operations. Which this is where we also joke with boards about like the time you spend on, on your board meetings, right? And how late they go, right? And how many agenda items? And of course, you know, this year has been very unique for many boards, so there's been a lot of late night meetings. I'm sure you all aren't fond of continuously having meetings late night. But the reality is that this is where we talk about how do we prioritize our work so that we can really focus on the things that are gonna be most impactful? And we can hold ourselves accountable for. Um, being data savvy, not sure how many of you on the board like love data, some of you like are like, oh, I get a headache looking at data. Some people I call them the data geeks where they love data, but we do have to be data savvy as a board, right? We have to drive our equity work with data, with the facts. But we also have to recognize that when we're working through um, looking at data, this is the, the work that your uh, staff brings to you. So your superintendent, your staff, they always gonna bring reports to you and you're gonna ask questions. But that data has to be very, very much something that you center your work around in measuring and monitoring, is this actually happening? So we'll talk a lot about how that looks in terms of looking at data um, from a governance lens. So very important, that's your data savvy. Um, the sixth one is more about resources. So we, we signed up to be on the board, so you gotta be fiscally sound, right? You gotta make sure that our resources are allocated in an equitable way, that we make sure the budget is healthy. And this is a really important part of effective governance when you're trying to lead for equity. Not only do you align your resources, you monitor them. And a big piece that I call out here in this assessment is, is, it's your, your equity work is focused through your professional development. Which you should be very proud of the report you just got and the presentation around all the professional learning that you are committed to. It's huge because eighty-five, ninety percent of your budget goes to who? To people, right? So we gotta invest in the people. So really important that resources are really carefully um, allocated to ensure equity work moves forward. And so the last two kind of go simultaneously. So the board is united, right, with the superintendent and understand our respective roles. And there's mutual trust and strong focus on equity. And this is uh, what I call a culture, right? This is creating a culture of a board where literally beyond your terms. Cause all of you are like, yeah, you're gonna be on the board forever, right? You're like, yes, I look forward to that. And some of you are like, maybe not. But here's what I always talk to board members about is you want to create a culture of this work. So even beyond your terms, right, when new people come onto the board, there's a way we do things, right? And we create a culture with our superintendent to really ensure that we are united in our equity focused work. So very important piece. And then lastly, of course, our study sessions are centered around professional development for the team, right? The governance team, board members, superintendent, always important that you have ongoing professional learning for you. So that you can continue to learn about what equity is, learn the concepts, the barriers, build your capacity so that as you're asking questions to the staff and you're monitoring the work that you have context, what does this mean? So always important to invest professional development time for each other. Now, the last piece that's so interesting is at the bottom, you see there's three things. And so one of the um, like outcomes that I talk about is boards should have an equity statement, right? That's your common vision, your, your kind of um, shared values that you um, have in writing, you've adopted and you utilize as a lens to govern. Um, having a policy. So having an equity policy, very important part of the work because you operate at the policy level. So therefore what is needed is that you would have a policy to really govern with this equity lens. And so many have adopted the CSBA policy, um, have adapted it to make it their own, some have its own policy. So when we talk about this, that is something that only we want to have adopted, but we want to keep at the forefront, use it to guide our work. Okay, we don't want to adopt them and they go sit on a shelf somewhere and we have no idea what it says, but we go back to it. It, it's really a guidance for our work. And then of course, having a plan, right? So it's, it's great to have a policy, great to have, you know, your statement, but if we don't have like actions that we've identified that we want to do with, with our superintendent and staff. Um, and our community, then how do we get to equity, right? We have to have some goals, some actions that should align with your LCAP, your strategic plan. Okay, so this is kind of a big picture of what the work is about and everything about the study sessions really center around focusing on equity. But through effective governance. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna pause um, and see if there are questions or thoughts so far. And then I'm gonna give you a few pieces to consider as you get ready to prepare. Um, and I'll see you again in April, of course. But I want to just pause for a minute because I've given you quite a little bit of information. Sometimes it feels like drinking water from a fire hose. But I wanted to just pause and see what questions or thought you have. Love to hear from you.
Any questions or comments, board? No, Dr. Lalas, go ahead.
Well, there's a lot of information that you shared, but how do you put equity at the center of everything? Everything you do. How do, how do we do that? There's, there's some literature that tells us how to do it. But you're gonna be working with our principal and we want equity to be at the center of what we do. How does that look like?
Yeah, great question, excellent question. So one of the things that I think education educators wrestle with is how do you do that, right? Your question. And sometimes we see equity as like a project, right? Or this book we read or this checkbox of things we do, right? But as um, you heard um, Mr. Flores say earlier, is that equity work in education is really centered around a lens that we apply to everything we do. So whether it's around educating kids in the classroom, curriculum instruction, kids on the play yard, right? Dress code, discipline, you name it, whatever it is, it's applying a lens to equity. And so I'm, what I'm gonna do is share a few slides in a moment to give you a little context of why we have to define it. Because when I say have an equity lens, what does that mean? We have to know what it means to apply it. And so a fancy way of looking at equity is like, hey, this is about giving kids what they need when they need it. But it's also centered around how do we identify what they need? Which when you have to look at historically, what we'll do in our um, our study sessions, we're actually gonna go through the history of public education to unpack. Like why do we not have equity in education? To it, to really inform what do we do? So for a governance team, like you have to look at it from the policy lens, right? Like how do we do this work? Well, our policies need to land in the trenches with our kids where we see data that shows that all kids have equally high outcomes to be successful in Corona Norco. And, and that, that has to now unpack, like what are some of those, those action steps that we have to measure and monitor as a governance team? For our principals, um, to go to your question about the principals, Dr. Lalas, is really um, centered around. How do you help principals, one, be aware of what it is? Recognize um, kind of how it lands for them in their own personal life. But also what are some of the barriers to it so that as they make plans to interrupt the system, I call it, right? They have to do some things differently. Um, that requires an approach that's very different. And so I'm gonna share with you a slide um, that, let me see if I can get uh, to the slide. Um, I'm gonna share a slide, is it gonna show up? It may not show up on here. Um, but there's an article that we utilize um, called the Water of System Change. And this particular article I shared with you all in your pack and not sure if you had a chance to read through it. Yes, that one, yeah, that one. That one, very powerful framework to help us see how do we do equity focused work? Because it's a complex issue where we have historically marginalized groups of people who are in our system, who have not been served well. So how do we fill in those gaps, understanding that it's not just about changing policy, right? But it's about how the mindset of our educators are in terms of doing the work. And that's what we do with our principals is not only like, hey, we need to address like grading policies, right? We need to address homework policies. We need to address the dress code and you name it. There's so many things we can unpack that have shown inequities for our children. But those actions actually require us first to have an awareness of it before we can actually apply an action. Okay, so hopefully that helps a little bit, Dr. Lalas, and I'm gonna share a few slides to give a little context to it. And, and on April tenth, I believe, we're gonna unpack this in depth, so I didn't want to go too deep today. But I love your question and we're definitely gonna unpack it. Do we want to allow another question? Any other questions before I jump to the last few slides to give you a little more context? And kind of piggyback on a little bit deeper uh, context for Dr. Lalas's question.
Mrs. Marakine has a question.
Good evening. I um, have the question about the focus of the kids. Cause the kids are coming from different backgrounds, they're coming from different communities. And are you interviewing them? Are you looking at their needs? Because within the last several months, there have been big changes in their attitudes, especially with the black ma- life matters and other things that have arisen because of the political realm that we're living in right now. And so again, this may change.
Yes, it is.
From month to month or year to year. And I think that we should get back and always focus on the kids first, always focus on the kids. This is good.
Absolutely.
This is great. However, it's for the kids and, and what are we doing to them? Are we making them learn what we want them to learn or are we gonna do it so that they become better citizens and more effective as they grow?
Yeah, great question. Um, you know, the short answer is absolutely, it's always been about the kids. But you know what happens with this work? Because it gets complex, we get distracted and it becomes about not kids, right? It's about adults and what makes us feel comfortable. And so part of the discomfort is interrupting that mindset. And so when you mentioned like, do you hear from the kids? So there is gonna be a couple of opportunities for me to engage with hearing from kids in terms of helping to co-facilitate, right? How you do listening sessions with kids, how you collect data through surveys, how you actually cap, gather student voice. So that's absolutely a part of the work, which should inform the work that you actually um, should hear reported to you as a board. So absolutely, and so I'm gonna share this slide, cause I think this particular slide really speaks volumes um, about what you just shared. And it maybe speaks again to what Dr. Lalas brought up, is that one of the things we have to do is unpack what equity means. And so as I think about your question, you know, what does it mean to kids? We've often defined who kids are for them. And part of interrupting oppression, right? Systems of oppression is to hear the voice of those that have the least amount of power. And so when we look at slides like this, you look on the images and you see what's the difference between equity and equality, right? One of the things we've done a horrible job in education is we, we, we go with this focus on equality, give everybody the same thing, right? But each individual kid has a different need. So as you look at what our kids need, that is gonna have to drive our work. Those resources in the boxes you see on the video, on the uh, on the uh, the screen to the left is, you know, those, those boxes represent resources to support the needs of kids. And so we don't understand their needs, what we'll do is be misinformed and we'll assume we know what they need. And assumptions usually come through implicit bias, right? They come through the stereotypes associated with our babies. And without really unpacking students' true cultural identity, what will happen is we will take our narrative about what equity means and we'll um, put resources in places that may not be as impactful. And so that's why it's so important to ask those questions as a governance team is how is this, how are our resources really impacting the true needs of kids? And so one of the things we're gonna do this year as a, as a district, right, collectively is I'm gonna help you all kind of work through like this connection with the whole elephant blind man process, I call it. You know, it's a, it's a old parable that's been adapted and adopt, adapted into a poem. And I often use it to connect to how are we gonna really get to understanding what equity is? But also recognize it, just like the um, the six men who were filling on this elephant, um, the blind men. One of the things that's interesting is they're all wrestling with what this elephant is and they all have a different perspective. And so one of the real challenges is gonna be how do you really define equity for kids, recognizing kids are not monolithic. They are not all the same. They don't, we can't assume they are the same needs because they same, they mark those boxes, right? The data, you know, they're African American, right? You have an initiative to support African American kids. You have kids who um, are um, have special needs. You have kids who are English learners. And the reality is that all of those are equity issues, but they all have specific needs and kids aren't monolithic. They don't have the same needs. So that's gonna be the complexity of this work is to really focus on what kids need based on their story and not our story. And that's, that's really hard for us adults, because that's interrupting a system of oppression where power structures are have, have to be adjusted. So that article you all have in your hand, I highly suggest you really look at that, um, especially prior to April tenth. Cause one of the things we're gonna do is take that framework and unpack this complex issue of how do we address equity um, in Corona Norco through a systems approach. But also really recognizing that we have to look at how we shift some of these portions of the system to really create sustainable change. Not temporary change. And I know that you all are passionate about really seeing equity gaps closed. And so that particular article is gonna help you to really think through it. Um, here's an example where we'll unpack, but just to give you a visual about, well, what does equity mean? The National Equity Project has a really great definition to give us a little sense. And so one of the things we're gonna do is you unpack your work together. We'll talk about how do we define equity as a governance team? So that we can ask those key questions about, well, how do we address the needs of our students? So great question. And so we have about five minutes, so I wanna, um, I wanna see what other questions ha- you may have before I give you some um, context about next steps. We got lots of exciting things to unpack on the tenth and also in our summer um, time together. But I wanted to give you a snapshot of kind of where we're going and what the need is. And of course, in between sessions, you'll be able to um, reach out individually if you, if you'd like um, to get, you know, additional context. Um, but tonight was really just an overview for you. So other questions or thoughts you have before I provide some next steps for you?
Dr. Lalas?
Well, I'm, I'm asking this to be helpful. Now, I won't be shy to say that we have an equity policy in the district and we work on it for five years, more than, even more than.
Yep.
Right? Adopted by the board. And, and so I, I'm raising this because in addition to what we have, the real challenge is bringing it to the classroom. Right? Because we talked about it here and on, at the policy realm. And, and I, I won't be shy, the set of lenses we have in that equity policy is one, we recognize different uh, sets of categories of difference, different social identities. And that it's also in our, in our policy that inequality is inevitable. And if you don't pay attention to those inequalities, inequities will happen. And when there's inequities, that's when we need equity. And for us, in that, in that policy, and this is the difficult part, is bringing it to the classroom. And we, we included, and, and I asked the cabinet long time ago at uh, at uh, Marie Callenders, why are we doing equity? What, the why, right? I, I think in, in that policy, we included the whole notion of motivation, classroom. You know, we're getting into the classroom now. What does motivation mean from an equity perspective? May, may, maybe, and, and, and that means providing the kids in the classroom a sense of belonging. They, they have to understand that, right? They have to provide it with opportunities to experience autonomy. They have to provide it with opportunities to experience autonomy. We value their experiences. And we have to provide opportunities for them to experience competence. That they're competent regardless of the color of their skin, they can they can they can they can succeed. And so we're saying that because. In that policy, we have the notion of social justice. We want to humanize the experiences of our students.
Right.
So those are easier said than done at the policy level, but when we get to the classroom. That's why when I see your name and that the focus would be in classroom, I'm so excited. Finally, we have the policy which will connect with classroom experiences.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, you know, you're you're on to something. And one of the things so great about governance teams and why I say you need an equity policy? Because that should guide your governance, right? And your questions that you have about what is happening in the classroom. But I do want to say this to kind of defend our educators for a moment in my my closing kind of comments is. In order to realize something like educational equity in the system. We got to recognize that the system really wasn't designed to be equitable, which is why we don't see things in the classroom. And so one of the first steps is to give our teachers, our leaders, the opportunity to learn and to be aware. And to have that safe space to engage in why we have this policy, as you mentioned, like the why of the work. The what of the work, right? Like what actually are those gaps? Sometimes we're not aware of the reality. Sometimes our blind spots don't allow us to be aware. So we'll talk about the what the gaps are. But then it's being aware about why they exist. And that's where you got to give people that chance. And so one of the things you all are going to do as a governance team is not only you're going to look at the what. But the why is we're going to go through kind of a historical context. And you got to give your educators an opportunity. These are the things that as a teacher, when I was a teacher, I didn't get the lesson about. What does it mean to look back in the 1600s and see how our system even became what it is? And so you all are going to have a chance to do that as a governance team. So then we can get context of why it's so important to provide the professional learning and awareness to our teachers, our principals, our counselors, you name it. Because in the end, if we want to see equity gaps closed, we have to remember the system wasn't designed to be equitable. So it requires us to be very intentional with our policy to use that to guide our work. And so in closing, what I want you to pay attention to is our future work. I want to highly suggest that you look at a couple of things prior to our time together in April. We'll do some reminders to your staff, but you have the article Water of System Change, okay? Definitely look at that as how do we take this and look at this equity complex issue in our district? And look at it to look at sustainable closure of gaps. Very important one. Another one we're going to talk about is avoiding racial equity detours. So it kind of goes to that comment that we, you know, about who our students are and what kind of things we may not recognize that get in the way of addressing the needs of our kids. And then we're going to talk about the history, right? So you all signed up to jump in this water called Public Education as a Governance Team. So guess what? You've jumped into a system of inequities. And we're going to do the history of public education and you're going to see there's a reason why we have gaps. But now that we know that and we're more going more in depth. Now we got to look at what are we going to do to actually address those gaps? And that's where the article is going to be really powerful for you to unpack. And so with that, I want to pause and just thank you for allowing me the opportunity just to give you an overview. Because you can see that the importance of of dealing with. The work here, and this is this is my team. I want to make sure you know the teammates who are also working in collaboration with me behind the scenes. And also be working with us in the future with regards to the work that we're doing with all of your stakeholders to some degree. And these teammates work also with with me in some of your surrounding districts. So you all know Redlands Unified, you know Marino Valley. These are some that are the local ones, Claremont. And these are some who are really digging deep with some of our our colleagues in our profession. And seeing some great transformational change, but I call it a go slow to go fast process. The governance team has to support it, have the vision, come together, make sure you have a united vision on how this works. And then what we're going to do in April and also in our in our space together in the summertime. We're going to talk about how do you operationalize that and take this work to the next level? So that you can see these equity gaps close in your classrooms all across your district. It can be done. And it's a process and it's a be okay with a little non-closure because it may not all happen at one time. But creating a culture and a lens to do governance work to really impact equity in your district. I'm excited for you because you're on your way. You've already have the foundation. You've started this work. It's really now just intentionally coming together and doing this in a comprehensive way. And so with that, I want to thank all of you for the time tonight. Just want to give you an overview. Feel free to reach out in between the time. If you have questions, need a resource. And with that, I'm going to pass the virtual mic back over to. I think it was Ms. Flores. I think I was. You were the original one or was it? You all were presenting and I lost track of who was on the mic last.
Nicole, this is.
Was that Dr. Simon? Yeah, okay.
Nicole, this is Dr. Buenoestro, so.
Dr. Buenoestro, got it, okay.
Thank you for your presentation and for your intro for those folks that don't know you. And appreciate your work, appreciate the work that you're doing at our school sites.
Of course.
The I like what you say because, you know, I think folks may think, why are we focused on this right now when we're trying to open up schools? Like, aren't we backwards here district? But I think if you really look at this deeply, what we're saying is we're bringing our kids back, no doubt about it. But and they're already back and the other group is coming on Monday, our secondaries. But what we're saying is let's equip our teachers and let's equip our administrators. And ultimately, let's build capacity with them and ultimately with our students. Because we're going to produce a higher quality product. And so I appreciate your work. I appreciate the vision of the Board of Education. And there's a lot of strategic work that's coming up. So with that, I say thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I'm going to turn it over back to President Pollack.
Sounds good.
Again, on behalf of the board, Nicole, thank you so much for that overview. It is really exciting. I mean, we're we're excited already as Dr. Lollis said with with our equity policy. And now being able to really move forward with the plan. And again, the the bottom line is is our students and so how to take that next step. So that's the exciting part. It's going to be work. It's going to be eye opening for all of us. And so, you know, the four. You know, the four rules that you you had here, you know, studying those and 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 I'm looking forward to it. I mean, it's it's going to be. Exciting challenge. So we look forward to the time coming ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Honored to hang out with you all tonight. Stay encouraged on your journey and I'll see you soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Pollack, may I suggest as we transition to our strategic plan, maybe a five minute break?
Yes, I just wanted to say one thing because I don't think we had a chance to ask questions on the first presentation. But I just on the ethnic studies, Dr. Sanchez, is there a way you said that we have a group of teachers who are working on developing and now aligning? If we can get a list, you don't have to do it now, but if we could, I would like a list of the teachers and the the school sites that where they teach. So we could see who's involved in that committee. I'd be excited to see that.
Yes, sir. We'll get that to you.
Thank you. Okay, let's take a five minute recess. It is six. Six twenty one, so about six twenty five, six twenty six, we'll be back. Dr. Lollis? Okay, we are reconvening. And next up, Dr. Buenoestro with our strategic plan.
Yeah, thank you, President Pollack. So as you know, when I got hired back in November, one of the things that we talked about, the board talked about and myself. We talked about within the first hundred days is make sure that we embark in a new strategic plan. Working with an outside group, you may remember that through the superintendent's search. There was a consistent mention by the community that, you know, they were aware that Corona Norco had done great work over the years. But they thought that it was time for maybe a new vision, a new direction, fresh ideas. So appreciate again your leadership. And through that, we've been we contact contracted Moss Adams. So they've been deep in the work and collecting data. So this evening we have with us the team. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce Ms. Annie Rose, who's going to take over. And and again, I want to remind folks that are listening, this strategic planning is again assist a a school system approach. So that we bring it ultimately to the kids and we produce better results. So we 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 know that the results that we've had in the past have been good, have been one of the top in the in certainly in the state and here in the county. But we, as we said before, we want to be number one. So this is part of that process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Annie Rose.
Thanks so much for that introduction. Really nice to see you all tonight. What are we are hoping to do? We will go around and do some intros on our team. But what we're hoping to do tonight is just share a little bit more about the strategic planning process. I know we've spoken to each of you individually about this work. So we wanted to give the big picture overview of this is what this project is going to look like. This is where we're going. We want to talk a little bit about some of the strengths and challenges that we've identified already as we're going through this work and collecting information and doing interviews with your staff and community members. And then we're going to spend some time really thinking about mission and vision and values. And digging in a little bit more on the vision and values pieces. So that we can start that conversation of how are we really going to ground all of this work? In the values that we have as a shared group together and the vision that we have for the district as a whole. And so as I said, my name is Annie Rose. I have met most of you at this point. I am joined by my colleagues Tammy and Colleen. And Colleen is actually going to kick us off doing a little bit of the project overview. So if Tammy, if you could share out the presentation, Colleen will get us started here.
All right. Thank you, Tammy. Hi, everyone. I'm Colleen. I think I've met most of you. So I'm going to go over the kind of grounding elements of the plan and give a little bit of an introduction. And then we'll get into the meat. Tammy, would you mind forwarding one slide? All right. So, so the purpose of this plan, and I heard the intro a little bit, which I think was excellent. So we're developing a new strategic plan, and really the timing is twofold. The first is we've got a new superintendent, and so it's a great time to develop a new strategic plan when we have new leadership in place and energy around new leadership. Another is the pandemic. It has changed the way that we have delivered education and really caused us to think really differently about teachers, students, our staff, and our leadership. And so it's a good time to actually think about how do we want to be in the next few years? How can we harness maybe some of these lessons learned and be more innovative? And as I heard just a moment ago, kind of get to number one. Our goal really is to help you identify those major strategic priorities and then work to develop how we're going to get there, develop that clear path of objectives and strategies and those actions that we're going to take in order to achieve our goals. Next slide, please. So here's our planning framework. You're going to see this a lot through this process. We always like to ground you in this planning framework as we move forward. So what we're working on tonight is right at the top of this pyramid, the mission and the vision and the values. And these are really the foundational elements of the strategic plan. So they answer the questions of who we are, who we serve, what our purpose is as an organization, where we want to be in the long term, and then really thinking about using these to help us make decisions. So if we all understand what our mission, vision, and values are from the school board all the way down, then we can all answer questions much more easily. We can help to make decisions when we're confronted with a new potential program or service, when we have the opportunity to do something interesting, we have a grant, or we have something that we maybe are trying to make a trade off between. We can ask questions like, does this align with our mission and vision? Does this help us to achieve our vision? Is this in line with our values? And if it's not, we probably shouldn't do it, or we should figure out another way to approach it so that it is in alignment with where we want to go. As we move forward in the planning process, we'll work with you to help establish those big picture strategic goals. And then we'll really work with staff to develop those objectives and performance measures. Because it's really important for us to also be able to report back out to our community and say, this is what we said we would do. Here's how we're going to measure those outcomes. And then here's how we're doing. And are we on track? Are we not on track? And talk about the why behind that. We'd also like to see, once a strategic plan is complete, a series of operating plans for those departments and administration, as well as at the school level, and how we're going to achieve the goals that we have set out in the strategic plan. We really want everyone to be tied to achieving these goals and really on the same page moving forward into the future. Next slide, please. So we're taking in a lot of input. I'll show you on the next slide a little bit into the timeline, too. But part of this process is to really make sure that we collect as much information as possible. So we've completed our initial information collection process, and that involved interviewing all of you individually, interviewing many members of the district's leadership team, principals, lots of folks all across the district. We also took advantage of the tremendous amount of community outreach that you have done over the last year or two. So in the superintendent's search, as well as the amount of outreach that has been done as a result of the pandemic. And we're able to really leverage a lot of that information to be able to collect that today as well. And we'll continue to collect information and move forward. So right now, we are here. Where are we? We're working with you. Thank you, Tammy. We're on that second purple box. So we've started the project. We've collected all of the information that I just mentioned. We've conducted interviews and focus groups. We've done a work session with the executive cabinet, really focused on mission, vision, and values to help seed this. And now we're here with you to work on that as well. Coming out of this, then we'll have some draft statements that we can take a look at all together. We're going to do an all-staff survey as a result of that, and then start working on the goals. So that we'll have a couple of pieces moving at the same time. Ultimately, once we get a draft strategic plan, we're going to go out to the community a couple of times. So the first is, at a very high level, these are the goals that we're thinking about. Do these resonate with you? Does this make sense? Is there anything that's missing? What are your thoughts on these goal areas? And then once we have a draft plan, we always like to put that out for community input as well. So when we, we actually just finished the City of Corona strategic plan last month. And so we did a series of community open houses that were virtual. We posted the full plan, and we hosted folks to let them ask all the questions that they wanted to ask and provide that input. And we'll do this as well here. That provides a really great opportunity for folks to tell us, you know, what we might have missed, things that are the most important to them, and truly reflect our school community priorities here in the plan. And then our goal is to have this plan adopted by you sometime in May or June. And I think Tammy, over to you.
Great. Thank you, Colleen. So I have the pleasure of sharing with you guys a little bit about our results so far. So I'm going to start with the district's strengths. So we want to be able to build on the district's strengths as part of the strategic planning process. And we want to commend the district because there are a lot of really great strengths that we often don't see at districts of your size. So we see very dedicated employees. We see a very strong connection both between employees and with the district as a whole. Even for employees that were newer to the district when the pandemic hit, they talked about the strong levels of collaboration and communication that were able to persist despite this very strange year that we have all experienced. So there's been a lot of that collaboration and innovation and thinking about, how do we come together as a district to serve our community in the best way possible, which is really great to see. As Superintendent Bunrostro mentioned, we have very high student success in a lot of schools. So we're up there. How do we get even higher? Keep reaching for that number one segment within the state or the county. We also talked with folks about the site-based management and how that really gives schools the opportunity to create their programs and their structures in a way that suits their particular community's needs. So as we were meeting with principals, it was really great to hear about all of the very niche things that each school was able to accomplish, and that the district was supportive of those very innovative models to education and to expanding the horizons of our students. One of those areas is CTE and career preparedness. And so we do see a very high focus on those two areas, which is great to see, especially knowing that the direction of work for students is changing. And so you're able to adapt to that and start preparing them for that in your K through 12 education. We also saw very strong history and ties to the community. A lot of the employees that we spoke to said, this was the district that I went to, or I have family in the district. I have children or nieces and nephews or grandchildren in the district. So there's very, there's that close community feel, again, despite the size of your district, which is really great to see. And then the last area that I'll mention here is your very diverse community. You have a lot of diversity from a linguist perspective, from socioeconomic perspectives, from different interests, and you're able to pull all of that together and really embrace those differences because of the site-based management that you've been able to accomplish and achieve in all of your schools. So all great things. Keep these in mind, because again, we do want to be able to build on these rather than just say, okay, we already have this, and now what are we going to do? So keep these in mind throughout the process, please. Okay, on to what we are finding in terms of opportunities and challenges. And I would say, so these are our five themes that we have identified. Overall, what we are hearing is that we want to be able to take advantage of the last year and think about the lessons learned as a result of this sort of strange environment that we have all endured and are getting back to normal and figuring out what that normal really is, and how do we use that and shape it so that it fits our student and families' needs. So the first area that we have identified here is student well-being and success. So, you know, this relates to the learning loss that we have experienced as a result of COVID-19 due to the remote working or remote learning environment, as well as the other stressors that students have endured over the last year. Along with that, we have mental health needs. So thinking about how do we, as a district, shape our operations to be able to identify and support those needs at every single level of education within our district. Offering flexible learning options was another theme that we heard about. So, you know, we've, again, there are some students and families that remote learning has really worked for them. So what do we do to be able to embrace those lessons that we have learned and those opportunities that do exist with remote learning, with new technology, to be able to really embark on shaping the district's future and making sure that it fits our families and communities' needs? And the last area that I'll talk about related to student well-being and success is how do we provide services to support student equity? We know that there's a lot of equity work going on at the district right now. And we're actually in, we're in conversation with those other consultants, and so we're keeping everything in the loop as part of this process. But really thinking about, what are the ways that we can embed equity within our operations to be able to support those values? The next area that I'll talk about is employee support. So again, thinking about what is the impact that the pandemic has had on our employees? How do we support them and their well-being, especially in this transitory period, and thinking about potentially going back to school full-time in whatever that methodology might mean next year? Also thinking about teacher support. So professional development, PLCs, learning communities, ways that, again, we are able to reinforce the communication, collaboration, and idea sharing that is such an integral part of our district and its success. Another area here is the union relationship. So districts across the nation are dealing with strained union relationships due to sort of the push and pull of return to school negotiations, I would say. It doesn't sound like Corona Norco is an exception to that. There does seem to be very good faith efforts on both sides of the table. But again, this is thinking about, how do we shape our relationship with the union to really serve as a partner for the district? So how are we working together to be able to achieve our goals and objectives that are shaped as part of the strategic plan? And what are the strategies that we may be able to use to accomplish that? And then the last area here also ties back to thinking about lessons learned in the pandemic. So what are new ways of working or teaching that we might be able to explore, potentially with new technologies, new opportunities, and so being able to think about how we might be able to incorporate that into our operations? The next area, the next big theme is community relationship. So over the last year, we've had some flip flops in terms of community communication. We also heard that there was a survey done saying, do you want to go back to school or not? And the community was pretty well-divided on that issue. So again, if we're thinking about how do we maintain these really great community ties that we have and be able to build on them. So we want to be able to recover from the differing expectations that people had and the way that we were able to handle those things. So thinking about building our trust up with the community again is another area of focus that we have identified through our discussions. The next area is district alignment. So a few key areas here. So the first is thinking about leadership alignment and collaboration. As Colleen mentioned, we want to make sure that there's really great alignment between all levels of leadership throughout the district so that we're all on the same page and working towards the same goals. So that goes from the Board of Education to the superintendent, to the executive cabinet, down to principals, down to teachers, really making sure that there's great alignment throughout the entire district. And that ties really closely with another area that we were talking about in this theme, which is finding the right balance between site-based management and consistency or centralized support. So what we've been hearing is we have site-based management, which is a great opportunity. And sometimes there's a desire to understand what is the baseline level of service that all schools are expected to offer their students? And how do we support that at the district level? So thinking about finding that right balance, which can always be a little bit tricky, but exploring that a little bit more, especially in support of the student well-being and success area. So if we're thinking about mental health supports as well as achievement, we want to make sure that we're providing autonomy, but we're also providing a really great foundation for those schools to go out to their communities with. And then the last area that I'll talk about with district alignment is the ability to really focus in on some very key success factors. So we heard a bit that there's been some initiative fatigue. And so we sort of, sometimes we'll get distracted by the shiny objects. And those shiny objects can be great, but we need to dedicate enough time to implement a previous project to be able to see what happens with it. So be able to, again, say, this is our focus. This is how we're monitoring it. We're evaluating to make sure that we're achieving the outcomes that we're desired as part of this initiative. The last thing that we'll talk about today is finance and assets. So districts, again, across the country are experiencing a lot of financial uncertainty right now with the pandemic, both at the governmental level, as well as thinking about enrollment, as some families decide that homeschooling might be a better option and enrollment numbers might decline. That can certainly impact our budget. So thinking about how are we able to balance that financial uncertainty with these autonomy and the programs that we want to be able to provide our community, knowing that some of those will require increased expenditures? The other area here is thinking about our physical infrastructure. So how are we approaching decisions about our physical infrastructure in a way that is equitable across different communities and sites, as well as thinking about how do we potentially adjust the use of those physical infrastructures or actual school sites based on what might occur as a result of taking advantage of different opportunities to provide learning to students? So if we have students that are continuing to participate in remote learning, then we don't maybe need as many classrooms. So what do we do with that extra space and how do we really harness that to be able to provide the best service to our community? And then the last area here is thinking about technology, which has been a huge issue, a benefit and a curse all the time over the last year, and thinking about the digital divide. And, you know, we don't necessarily have a one-to-one relationship with students and computers at all schools yet. And so that's another potential challenge that the district faces, in particular, if we are going to think about providing flexible learning options for students and families. Okay, that was a very brief overview. I promise that there will be additional information on that. And we're always open to additional questions as we go through the process. But at this point, I will turn it over to Annie Rose to talk a little bit about what we're here to do today. Great. Thank you, Tammy. And I realize we just gave you a lot of information, both about the project plan and then some of our initial themes and findings. So I did actually want to take a moment to pause here and see if there were any questions or anything that we can answer at this point that have come up for folks already.
Doesn't look like there's any questions, Annie.
Great. Sounds good. All right. Well, the real meat of what we wanted to talk about today was thinking about mission, vision, and values. And specifically, we're going to focus on vision and values. But really, these are the, as Colleen mentioned before, these are the foundation for your strategic plan. This really articulates where are we going, these serve as your decision-making framework for a lot of the conversations and questions that you may be having as a leadership team, or that could happen really anywhere throughout the district. And so we want to make sure that we spend a good amount of time here. And we've already been able to have a really great conversation with the extended executive cabinet to get their input on mission and vision and values. You already have some guiding pieces, like your guiding principles, that we've been able to look at and review and think about. And so what we wanted to do today was spend some time first on values and then on vision, really focusing in and hearing feedback from this group about what that could look like. So if you go to the next slide, the first one that we wanted to talk about was values, because this is, this is really sort of the basis of how do we want to operate together as a team? And that is true for you as the Board of Education, and that's also true for leadership and staff and students throughout the district, right? This is, what are the values that we hold and share together?
This is, what are the values that we hold and share together? And these values are typically established by district leadership, and they are the sort of basis for the standards of behavior, of how we want to treat each other and how we want to act together as a group. But they should also be really reflective of your community needs. What does your community expect from you? What does your community expect when you show up as a group to make decisions, to have discussions? Especially in an area like this where you're going to have to have really, and you already do on a regular basis, have really tough conversations, where there's going to be different needs, there's going to be very valid differing perspectives that you all may be bringing to the table. And so what we want to do is really think, how do we get a set of values that will enable us to engage in hard topics and move through those, come to a conclusion as a group, and be able to present a unified front as well? And so these are some of the sort of key pieces that will really sort of set the foundation for your work together as well as the rest of the strategic plan. So if you go to the next slide, there are already, you have, the district has a set of guiding principles that I'm sure you all are very familiar with. And these principles speak in many ways to many of the values that I think we heard articulated when we spoke with each of you and also when we've spoken with leadership in other interviews as well. And so you can see here on this list, this idea of having the value of high success, that all students can learn and be successful, that's a value. Diversity is recognized as a value here. This idea that personal relationships are the strength and foundation of the organization, that one stuck out to me by far when I was reading through this list, because that is a true value that you are already living by and that is really coming to the front of every conversation that we've had. And so there's a variety of pieces here. I won't go through each one of them, but I did want to take a moment so that we can look at these and think about what are the values that we've already articulated in a variety of different ways? And what are the ones that we're currently living by? And what are the ones that we wish to live by that might be a little bit more aspirational for us as well? And so if you go to the next slide, these are just some value examples from other districts that we've worked with, other organizations that we've worked with, just to get sort of your brain thinking and starting to brainstorm on some of these in terms of what could our value statements really look like? What would we want to bring to the front? And so the idea of something like accountability, that one often, often comes up because we have this sense of we wish to be accountable and transparent with our community. And I know that that's a value that I heard from many of you already. There's others on this list. Sometimes we hear from folks about wanting to be creative and innovative and having that really at the core of a lot of the decisions. Equitable, obviously, that's a major topic. You've already had a whole conversation around that this evening, and that work will be ongoing. But I can imagine something here around equity and diversity, inclusion, creating a welcoming space, creating a space where all students can thrive. There's a lot on this list, like respectful or relational, team-based. Again, this idea of really talking about what are the relationships that we want to build with each other? Even things like kindness and love can show up on this type of value example as well. So again, I'd love you to take a little look at this list, and then what we're going to do is just spend three minutes. And I'd like for each of you individually to maybe grab a piece of paper, jot down some ideas, and come up with three values that you think are most critical to the organization, either values that you're already living by, values that you wish to live by. So we're going to give you a couple minutes here. I'll set the timer. And we just want to give you some space to look at this list, think about what you would want to add, and come up with your top three values, and then we're going to have a discussion around those. Okay? All right. Well, I hope that was enough time, but not too much time. And what we'd like to do now is actually hear from each of you, hear about the values that you selected and hear a little bit about why you picked the ones that you picked. And we're going to jot down some notes just so we don't lose anything from the group. But if anyone would like to volunteer to go to be a brave first soul, that would be fantastic.
Well, you know, I've been here for a long time, and I think this district was well-known for collaboration. You know, I can name super superintendents and union leaders who collaborated and work on projects. I believe that's why we're in such a good district, because of that employee-employer relations. And it did not fall from the sky, because we trained ourselves. We went to training, and we were trained how to be collaborative. So I think it's not part of the guiding principles. I was very surprised, but it should be. So one. And the second one is equitable, right? We're moving forward. The talk of equity is all over the place, and now we're starting to define what it is. And I think it's time for the school district to be equitable, to apply equity-directed decision in hiring, in budget, in curriculum. We have to, we have to theorize equity so much, but now it's time to make it practical, to make it equity-driven curriculum. That's new to us. And the third one is justice. Now, how can you be an excellent school district? How can you be equitable? How can you be collaborative if you're not paying attention to justice? Justice. You have to know who you are in relation to other people. You have to honor diversity. You have to honor inclusion. You have to honor varied ways of assessment. You have to care about this community. Those are, those are norms of justice. So moving forward, being here for 25 years, we haven't touched on those values, justice, equity. Collaborative, from the 90s, I would say, some five years ago, we're collaborative. But we're starting to get worse. So I think we need to get back and train ourselves again, if the district wants to.
Great. Thank you for sharing that. There are a couple pieces that I wanted to highlight in what you said. The first is really thinking about, you know, you raised this question that came up a lot in our conversations, which was, what is the actual definition of equity? Like, what are, how are we defining that within the district so that we can operationalize it? And it's very exciting to hear that it sounds like that work is happening and is in progress. But really thinking about, really, in order to operationalize it, we have to have that shared understanding, knowing that it's a value and how we're going to really bring that into focus. And then I think, too, on the collaboration point, I really appreciated what you said about the fact that collaboration is something that needs to be maintained on a regular basis. This is a practice of collaboration and a practice of respect. And so by having that be part of the values, that can be one of the ways to sort of bring that in and make sure that that is an ongoing lived value that is showing up in every one of the interactions as well. So thank you for that. All right. Who would like to go next?
I'll go next. John. First one, it's kind of a two-parter, actually. I put honest and ethical. To me, they're, they run hand-in-hand, so I didn't really want to separate them. And I really feel like, especially in our position as school board members, and actually, I put this kind of above folks at much higher levels than us, senators, congresspeople. I just feel like because not only families are looking at us, but students, to me, almost more importantly, students. And I think we need to be above standards that some others might fall short on, but we have to be kind of a shining light in that area and to really show that, especially, like I say, students, that the importance of that, of honesty and being ethical. Then safety is a huge one. Safety has taken on, as everyone knows, a totally different lens these days with what we're doing in our classrooms, the spacing, the mask, the ventilation systems, you know, all that has gone into the deep cleaning. You know, and safety has been something that we have done well here in Corona Norco. It's just taken on a different lens. Safety has been previously, and still is, but, you know, just keeping our students and staff safe from outside predators and people that we don't want on campus and different lens. So it's, take, it's still, that's absolutely still part of it and always will be, but it's just, it's different, how we're looking at it through a different lens. And then sustainability, I think that's, for me, that's a biggie. So many times, and we've all done it, all of us up here, think we have this brilliant idea, and staff will take that brilliant idea, which doesn't necessarily work sometimes. A lot of times, they're, they're good and they go. But I think we need to make sure that if we're adding new things, that we're either looking to take away something, but I think sustainability and keeping on that path instead of, it's not fair to staff, and I mean at any level, to be jumping around and, okay, today's flavor is, it just doesn't work. There's just too much on their plates to be continually adding and not looking at what, quite frankly, and this ties to it, to sustainability of what isn't working. So we need to eliminate some of those things that have not proven out. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. That's really helpful to hear your definition of what sustainability means to you, and it sounds like a lot of that really has the focus around, if we're in an environment with limited resources, how are we making strategic decisions rather than sort of the shiny object syndrome that Tammy had mentioned earlier? And really thinking about when we're making a decision, especially for a program or introducing something new, do we believe that there will be resources to sustain it into the future as well? That's great. Thank you.
Okay. This is Bill. I'll go next. I came up with a different one that wasn't on the list, I don't believe. I was looking at different, different examples, the honesty, the ethical that John both mentioned, but I came up with integrity. I think integrity is very important as individuals and as an organization. I think you could summarize some of what we talked about with ethicals and honesty, and you could summarize with that. I think that if we, if we aren't, if we don't have integrity, I think our values, our mission, our vision really is unsubstantiated. And so I think as individuals and as an organization, we have to have integrity. People will not, as leaders, will look at us differently if we don't have that integrity. And so how can you lead and have people follow you if you personally don't have that? And then respectfulness, I think is important, that you could kind of put that in integrity. But I like being respectful, because again, I think that, especially now during this last year, with all the different feelings that people have, and, you know, if we just show respect to each other, I think that goes a long way. So I like that as a value. And then the last one is being bold, boldness. And again, I think this year, we really saw that. We have to be bold. We have very important decisions to make and not easy decisions to make, and everyone is not going to agree with us at all times. But we have to be bold if we believe in this vision and those values. We have to be bold. So those are my three values.
Great. I appreciate, too, I think you and then even in the last discussion, also really thinking about something like integrity and respect. When we think about students and who's looking to us, those, I think that those values come even more important if we're seeing this group and other leadership within the district as showing an example to students of how do you engage in difficult conversations? How do you engage with people who might not agree with you? And do that in a really respectful way and a really productive and constructive way, where we're still all, you know, we are all going to be aligned around our values, and then we're going to be able to come together and do this work constructively. And I think it becomes, obviously, that's critical in any working relationship, but it becomes even that much more when we really think about, if we're grounding this in the student experience and what students are seeing from leaders of their district, this is extremely critical. So thank you for bringing those up.
Good evening. I agree with all my colleagues on all these issues. In fact, I changed to three additional. So I'll begin with the first one. I think that in order for equitable ability to occur, we need to be innovative and creative. We need to have programs and continue the programs like we have right now. Our CTE program is out of this world, out of this world. And those are for those students who may not excel academically, but yet can be driven to some sort of career and feel success in that career. So I think that innovation, that creativity, and it keeps going on. And I know that I was at a meeting a couple weeks ago, and one school district was talking about their fireman's program. Of course, you know, I wanted to go and shout out everything that we were doing here in Corona Norco. However, you could see what we're doing here spilling over to other districts and seeing the importance of that being there. Also, excellence. Excellence is also important, and because I'm in a new community representing Eastville, and we have a large Chinese community there, and we met with them a couple years ago, asking them what their needs are and their desires for their children. And so knowing that and communicating with the, with the community itself, we could see what they think excellence is for their children and also with the children themselves. And the third thing, relational, meaning that there must be a connection between the community, between the students, and everyone else, and they're trying to make their education something that they're going to remember for the rest of their life. The other thing is that I'm glad to hear, as you were doing your community results, that people live in their community, stay in their community, teach their children, grandchildren, and that is a very positive thing to be happy and proud about. So those are my three.
Those are great. And I appreciate how you also connected through recognizing that these values relate and build on one another. If we have a value of innovation and creativity, we can put all of that good, positive energy towards saying, how are we going to tackle a really difficult challenge like operationalizing equity and bringing equity work really into every aspect of our services that we provide to our students? So I think that that's a fantastic connection that you've made, because I think ultimately, when we get together our endless of values, we will be able to see that each one of them really can support each other as we go through this work as well. Last but not least.
I have accountable. I believe we need to be accountable to our students.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. I'm having a little difficulty hearing you.
John, accountable.
Great.
I feel like I'm in the spelling bee. Okay, so to me accountable, we need to be accountable to our students and parents at all times. That's why we're here to do this job. Also, safety, like John said, I just feel that our school district has done the best they can to have every safety precaution we, we have in place for our students to come back to a safe school. I believe it, I know it, our safety plan is the best. And I know from speaking to other superintendents and other board members in our county and up the state, they, you know, they follow us. They ask us, what is your safety plan? And sometimes it might not be what, do I say this without? Maybe some parents don't believe it is, but I believe it is. If I didn't believe in our safety plan, I wouldn't be bringing our students back. I wouldn't be wanting our students to come back. So kudos to our staff for doing such a great job. We need to, we need to be transparent. That is a big thing. We need to be transparent at all times. Whatever is going on, we need to put, put it out. Today I was talking to Dr. Buen Rosso and saying, sometimes we need to put it in simple English. Sometimes we use these big words that, you know, teachers, professors, doctors understand. Sometimes, some of us parents, we're not doctors, we're not teachers, or, you know, give it to us in simple English, what we want to see, what we want to hear, what is going on in our district. We need to simplify a lot of, a lot of the things that we send out. We have a lot of different dialects, languages in our district, and sometimes it doesn't translate the way we might think. A lot of our Spanish is Latin. A lot of our parents might not understand that level of, you know, some of those words that are in Latin, I speak Spanish and I don't understand. I have to look them up, you know, but we need to be, we need to put it out a little bit simpler and we just have to keep the transparency with our parents.
Great, thank you. Yes, and I think that point about transparency, it's not just putting information out, but it's really making sure that we're sharing information in a way that is actually accessible to people, that we're meeting people where they're at and that we're sharing information so that it can be a two-way communication street, not just, you know, an announcement from the district, but rather leading to that engagement that I think everyone would like to see there. That's great. Well, this is a fantastic list. In the interest of time, I'm going to move us forward so that we can focus a little bit on vision. So now we've talked a little bit about values. I want to spend a little bit of time here thinking about vision because this is this big picture question of what is the ideal state of our community? What is the ideal state for our students, for our district in the future? What are we actually working toward? And the fantastic thing about a vision is that it's a way to bring people into alignment. If we can all agree on what we're trying to get toward, that can be a really, really excellent way of getting people on the same page, making sure that even when there's activities that are happening, that are happening very independent of each other, that they're all in support of this ultimate vision. And so when we're thinking about this, if you go to the next slide, I've included a couple different vision examples here. And what you can see from this is that some of these visions focus very squarely on preparing students, every graduate ready for college career and life. That's a vision. Or all students being empowered to reach their max, maximum potential for lifelong learning. Some of these vision statements focus a little bit more on the type of community or the type of environment that you're trying to create, a community where all children feel loved, or even becoming a national model of educational excellence. So that one's really focused on what do we want to be as a district, rather than focusing in particularly on the student. And then some are mixes. So the last one here, our district will be an exemplary 21st century learning community whose graduates are prepared to excel in a complex, interconnected and changing world. And one of the things that we want to think about when we're thinking about a vision is what can we create that people can actually remember? Ultimately, this is something that you should easily be able to remember, quote off the top of your head, something that's really going to have some sticking power with it. Because those are the visions that we found are most useful and most used. Because if it's too long and too complicated, it sits on a shelf somewhere. So again, I'd love to take just a couple minutes here for each of you to do a little bit of brainstorming. And you don't have to write a mission statement or a vision statement, rather. That is not the goal. But I'd love for you to think about what are some of the key phrases or ideas that you would really want to see articulated in a vision statement? So again, just jot down a couple phrases, words or ideas that you'd want to see in the ultimate vision statement for the district when you think about what are we working toward together as a community? So I'm going to give you about two minutes here. I'll set the timer and let you go for it. All right. Well, I know that was a very short period of time, but it would be great to hear from you some of the, the top words, phrases, ideas that you think of when you think of a vision for the district. And again, we can, we can go down the list or folks can just shout out different ideas we can add to.
All right. With, with me, to advance equity-driven mindset for educational justice and excellence.
Great. Next.
You realize this is hard to, to do, to pick the three and then do this. It's, you know, we all have, I know more than, than just that. So anyways, so mine would be success for the entire learning community, which includes teachers, support staff, and I'm going to stop there and, and explain what I mean. We all have a teacher or custodial staff or somebody that we remember when we were in school who just off the church impacted us. So I, I really feel like the engagement of, of all of our staff is important and quite frankly, nurturing all of our staff feeds into the success of our students.
Thank you. And, and I fully, fully admit that this is truly a initial brainstorming session. So we know that you will have many more ideas to add to this as well. We just wanted to get some initial pieces down on paper so that we can kick off some of the discussion. So I appreciate you bringing up that point and also.
Amy, you forgot the word justice in mind. You forgot the word justice.
Oh, can, can I add justice? Thank you. Who next?
Okay, and I agree with Mr. Z, how he talks about the entire school community. I, I think everyone is important in this, in this community. So I, I don't know, I was thinking, you know, I want individuals in our school community to feel empowered, prepared and respected as they pursue their daily lives in, in our district, in CNUSD.
Any other thoughts?
No, that's it for me.
Great.
Okay, I say providing students with the opportunities to excel in their future endeavors and build their self-esteem through their education while at CNUSD.
Great. All right. All right, could you repeat the second half?
Half of it?
Your lovely. Vision statement draft.
And building their self-esteem through their education while at CNUSD.
Great, thank you.
Can you be in a strong district with high standards for every student?
Strong district with high standards for every student. Great, thank you guys so much for being able to, to share off the top of your head some initial ideas for this vision. It's really interesting to, to hear some of these themes that are coming up here and to think a little bit too about our conversation with the extended executive team. Because that conversation focused very much on, particularly on students and really thinking about how do we build and prepare students to be resilient and, and to be able to meet the challenges that may be coming their way? And I can already see that in some of the, the pieces that have been brought up here. This idea that if we're focusing on excellence, if we're providing services in an equitable way and helping people feel empowered and prepared for the future, that's really at the core of, of what we're trying to do here. So thank you for this. I know we only have a couple of minutes left here, so I want to move on to our next steps. And what this will be is we will be bringing together a couple different pieces. At every stage of this work, we really try and sort of bring together and balance the input that we hear from you as the Board of Education members, the input that we're hearing from the management and leadership team and the input that we're hearing from the community. And so we'll try and synthesize those, bring all those pieces together and come up with some initial drafts of the mission, vision and value statements. And then we'll bring those back to you for additional input. We're also going to have an all-staff survey that will be going out actually next week that's going to be getting some feedback on those initial mission, vision, value statements as well as some initial ideas around what could be our strategic goal areas. And so we wanted to build that in so that we can hear from staff at this point in the process before we come back to you so that you can also get a sense of perspective from what are staff thinking about this? Where are they focused? Where would they like to see the district focus as well? So that you can incorporate that into our next conversation together. So those will be our very next pieces for March. Any, any last questions for us or anything else about our next steps that we can answer at this point?
I don't think there are any questions. Annie Rose, Tammy and Colleen, thank you so much for this great work so far. And we look forward to working together in the future to, to develop this and get our strategic plan going. Dr. Buen Rosso, you want to say?
Yeah, same. I'd like to once again thank Annie, Tammy and Colleen. I also like to thank the board for their leadership, their commitment and their vision for the district. Thank you so much. And then I do want to provide kudos and recognition to Dr. Lisa Simon and Mrs. Avita Tapia for their leadership, high standards and hard work through this process. So thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, we'll talk soon. Okay. Next on the agenda, public comments. At this point in our agenda, we invite the public to address the board. Please limit remarks to three minutes or less. Comments will be timed. I remind the audience that this is a public session of the board and not a meeting of the public. Although the board will not respond to speakers directly, either during public comment or after the meeting, staff members may contact or follow up with written communication. If multiple speakers address the same subject, I may request that subsequent speakers only add new information. The time limit for a given topic is 20 minutes regardless of the number of speakers. If a speaker wishes to be heard on more than three topics, a speaker will be allowed up to a total of 10 minutes to address all desired items. Persons who have complaints against employees of the district are encouraged to seek resolution of those complaints by utilizing the district's written complaint procedures rather than orally addressing them at a meeting. Please refrain from applauding after each speaker. Public comment is now open. And I want to remind everybody about the, the COVID requirements that we have with masks. Okay, we have three public comments. Thank you for your patience. First is Julie Langlos.
Good evening. Tonight I'm here to speak about a practice in CNUSD which is harmful to our students. It creates anxiety and hopelessness. It makes our students want to give up and ask the question, why even try? This practice is that some of your teachers will not accept any late or missing work. To quote CNUSD in a waiver that's being submitted tonight, quote, educators are acutely aware of the mental health toll that the pandemic is having on students and believe that a high-stake statewide assessment would exasperate the stress on students. So if a statewide test would exasperate the stress on students, what do you think? What about the teachers that will accept no late or missing assignments? Do you think that exasperates the stress on those students? If a student is having a hard week, it is almost impossible. If they get a handful of zeros, it's impossible for them to come back. And if this waiver you are seeking is truly about the students, I would hope that you would consider these actions of these teachers and what they're doing to our students. You may want to dismiss my claim as saying it's only a few teachers, but in secondary, one teacher can affect the lives of 150 students. As we again change the schedule for our students and they are going to have to become more responsible for even more independent work, probably 65 to 70% of their work, I hope you will help them and help them be successful and ask these teachers to accept late and missing work. I sat here this evening and I listened to all the discussion. I listened to the topic of the well-being of our students, be named, probably. be named probably 10 times or a dozen times. That leadership is not just talk, but action. So I ask you, does this teach, do these teachers' actions align with CNUSD values? Your number, your opportunity for growth, your number-one opportunity for growth was in student well-being and success. Lastly, your number-one guiding principle tonight with students need to be priority one. So I ask you to take action and to support these students. And they need it because administration and some teachers are not.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, Mina Arnold.
Good evening, Board and Executive Cabinet. First of all, I'd like to congratulate everyone. We're in the red tier, right? That's a huge celebration. I want to start by thanking you for our quick, the plan for our quick return for secondary. We're excited to come back on Monday. I also want to thank you, last time I was here for the last board meeting, several of you promised that we would work hard for that extra day of in-person, right? So I want to thank you for that. Seeing the hybrid model and what was approved, it has come at a great cost. We all know that. My students are juniors at Santiago High School, and it frightens me to think that they're going to get a single day of instruction from their math teacher, their language arts teacher, and the rest is independent. I have one independent worker and I have one that I know is going to struggle tremendously. So I know that there was a tremendous cost to that second day of in-person. I want to really encourage everybody, whatever we can do, administrators, teachers, that one day of instruction is sacred. It should not be used for assessment. It needs to be, there needs to be parameters. We need to have instruction. My kids desperately need their kids teaching, not assessing them during that 45 minutes once a week of in-person. Last time I was here, I talked to you a little bit about my kids and I talked to you about professionals saying that the damage that this is doing to our kids is like a wrinkled piece of paper. My daughter, I, I have two kids, but I'm going to talk to you about my daughter. She's a junior at Santiago. She wants to go to college. She wants to go to Texas. She wants to go away to college. So I picture her showing up to college as a freshman with her wrinkled piece of paper. And I picture her looking around at all of her other classmates that have pristine, beautiful, clean pieces of paper. They got five days of instruction from their students, their entire high school, I mean, from their teachers, their entire high school career. And here my daughter is trying to keep up with everybody else with such limited instruction from her teachers. And that breaks my heart. It, I fear for her. I fear for her future success. There's a lot we can do to help prevent this. This is a good start, right? We're getting our kids in school Monday, but there is a lot we can do. And this is where the work actually is going to begin. Please consider the office hours, the daily office hours. I, I would venture to guess attendance at office hours so far this year, they've been poorly attended. So why do we have office hours every single day of the week? And then pretty much all day, that's all that's available to our students on Friday? Please reconsider that. That is a missed opportunity. I would also, there's been contact with Riverside County Department of Public Health. Dr. Bonroso, I know that you said that you had requested four feet space distance. They have come back to us. Andrew Zuniga has come back to us and said that they are actually allowing the four feet distance between the desks. That's another opportunity we need to take advantage of. And finally, concurrent instruction. Right now, we don't have the infrastructure for that. We need to be spending our funds on microphone systems, camera systems, projection systems, and we need to get that concurrent instruction going. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris Rodriguez?
Good evening, everybody. Congratulations on the red tier. Sorry, Mills, now you're going to have to touch the microphone. This evening, the strategic plan, mission, and values of CNUSD were one of the main topics that you discussed in the study session. And one of the areas was the collaboration with our labor organizations. The stress and the pressures of the COVID environment have not only tested, but pretty honestly darn near broken the relationships in our district between the labor organization and CNUSD. This past week, due to the very stringent parameters set by the Board for the first time in years, we had no choice but to participate in positional bargaining with two sides, rather than working together in an interest-based process in which we have found collaborative agreement. The priority of the Board to bring the students to, to school in person two half-days a week was such a narrow parameter that we were not able to make any adjustments to the proposed plan. Teachers remain concerned with the increase in the independent workload for students, with the loss of the instructional time and the planning and providing feedback to the 150 students that will only be receiving office hours and independent learning on remote days. But in the spirit of our commitment to collaboration and in order to ensure that there was no delay or obstacle to returning our students to school in person, CNTA has agreed with CNUSD's model as an act of good faith towards our relationship with the district. It is our hope that by making this agreement in the spirit of cooperation that we can attempt to begin to rebuild our relationship for the betterment of schools, our students, our families, and our community. Our elementary educators have started us along the path of return with their positivity and care for our kiddos. And now our secondary educators look forward to welcoming our students back into our classrooms. We will continue to do our best to overcome the circumstances and advance their learning, even in the model provided. We look forward to the day when we can actually see their smiles and not a mask in the classroom and enjoy more interactive educational opportunities again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for all your comments. We appreciate the patience too. Okay, next, Dr. Simon.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Pollak. As you know, you have a resolution in front of you and we're asking that the Board consider approving it. It is designed to waive the California state testing this year. All district superintendents in Riverside County came together over a week ago to support the California State Board of Education, who's requesting a waiver of a statewide assessment from the federal government. In lieu of statewide assessments, we would use local assessments such as iReady that we have, which we had presented through our program evaluation at one of our recent board meetings. And so we understand that state testing at this time would be really difficult for our students and, and actually our teachers who, who work hard in preparing our students. So we hope that you will support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, let's have some discussion. Elizabeth?
Last week, actually two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the California School Boards Association. And they're also requesting that we approve this waiver. And so we also would like to acknowledge Dr. Bonroso, who represented CNUSD with some other superintendents and Board of Educators, again, talking about the necessity to, to look at these kind of things for this pandemic reasons. So I would strongly urge all of my colleagues to vote yes to approve this resolution.
Lisa, I'm fully in favor of this resolution, but folks, I don't know how many are watching because this is a study session, but I think it's important for us to, to lay out. We understand what this one is, but there are some testing that's still like AP testing. Can you go over some of that? I, I just don't want confusion for the public. I'd really like them to have a full understanding.
Thank you. So you know, the testing that we're, that this resolution represents is CASP as an example. Regarding advanced placement testing, advanced placement testing will continue. The good, the good news is, is that students have a choice for the majority of the tests, not all, but for the majority of the tests, they can take it either a pa, a paper pencil or they can do it online. So the College Board is providing some options to the students. Dr. Bourgeois's office has coordinated messaging to go out to all the students so they can select their date and also select the time, I'm sorry, the process of which, sorry, just, whether they want to do paper, pencil, or do online. So again, it doesn't necessarily apply to every single course, advanced placement course, but the majority of them. So those tests will continue.
Dr. Lullis?
And because the AP testing will continue, what kind of support is the district providing, given the model that we have? I don't think they have enough minutes. They, they meet with their teachers once a week. And, and so what other support can we give them?
We appreciate that question, Dr. Lullis. And we did receive, receive a few emails and questions from parents and teachers. Oh, and actually, students as well, very concerned about their learning and testing. We appreciate that. And we are providing supports to our teachers. And actually, we have, have been providing supports to our teachers. We have resources and we will continue to do that if they want to run study groups and/or small group instruction outside their learning day. Our team is working with the school sites. Actually, it was discussed with the principals today and yesterday about providing the resources for our teachers and students. So anything we can do outside the day, we, you know, we, we have said, let's be innovative, think out of the box. If, if our teachers want to run small group study groups on a Saturday, a Sunday, in the evenings, definitely we'll provide that support. If we have other staff members who would like to provide supports and obviously are qualified to do so, we will, we will be open to that as well. But we really want to just do everything we can to support our students.
That's a follow-up question. So who will be responsible for that? As we speak, are there, is there a mechanism for this to happen? Do we have teachers or staff who are contacting these AP students and letting them know that help is coming?
That's a good question. And there's, it's kind of two-pronged because I'm looking at Mr. Gonzalez in relationship to staffing. I can tell you that Jennifer Bourgeois, Dr. Bourgeois, is our point person. As a matter of fact, she just showed us the draft of the information that she's providing to the schools and to the staff.
So it's safe to say for us to say it's coming?
Absolutely, quickly.
The other question I have is, is on, on LPAC. What happened to those tests? Because a few weeks ago, you know, I, from a, from a gut feeling that it's not a good test because of the pandemic, I, I texted you, can we call someone to invalidate this test or not provide them with LPAC? These are EL kids, English language learners who have not been coming to school and now we're giving them the LPAC test. What is that? Are we still?
And I, I'm looking at Carlos, I know that if he would like to come up and give some specifics. But to your point, we did follow up and requested. And we were not allowed to stop the testing. We have over half of our students tested as of today. Dr. Bourgeois and Mr. Flores have, and along with the staff have done an excellent job in providing the best, most comfortable conditions for the students as long as pre, as well as preparation for the testing. Doctor, or Mr. Gun, Mr. Flores, do you have any additional information? Thank you.
I think your point is well-taken around the high-stakes piece of LPAC testing. LPAC testing differs a little bit because it is based on civil rights legislation. It is a federal requirement. So we had, at that point, when we started testing in February, February 1st is when the window opens, we did not have that guidance that that would be, that there would be any flexibility on that. I think the more current numbers are that about 80% of our students have been tested on LPAC. It is a requirement both for identification and for summative purposes. What we are going to wrestle with statewide is to what extent will LPAC test and determine reclassification criteria. So that's a statewide conversation. The State Board of Education tried to waive that a couple of weeks ago and they were unsuccessful because what they were advised is that they didn't have the authority because it was a federal mandate. So we're still waiting on some more clarity around that. But I think your point around how do we penalize students, English learners, by giving them an LPAC? I think what matters now is moving forward is what do we do with that LPAC? Right, to inform instruction? And to what extent can we mitigate any, any issues related to reclassification of those students?
Yeah, explain to me, is there a funding issue? If we don't give it a test, they won't give us the funding necessary?
So it is a requirement that we assess those students under Title III or Title III funding, but it's also part of our consolidated application part that we commit to that. There's a lot of things still up in the air around the LPAC piece specifically, just because it's born out of case law, right? And so it's a little bit different. When we saw the flexibility around testing a year ago, it was done through an executive order by Governor Newsom. We haven't gotten to that point yet.
So lastly, what do, what do we do with the data?
Well, I, I think the summative LPAC does provide us at least a dipstick as to where our English learners are. We did run a series of LPAC bootcamps this spring with teachers that really mapped the blueprint of the LPAC to provide kids with additional opportunities. But the second part is really this, is that statewide reclassification criteria as it relates to LPAC is set at the state level. And so whether or not that's going to continue to be a four or not, we don't know at this point. In the past, we have seen them re-norm the test. In other words, looking at how kids do on the LPAC in comparison to other kids, we may see that come as a result of, of changing in LPAC scores, but we're, we're simply not there yet.
So without instruction, with, do you think, we question the reliability of the exam, right? Well, how, how are we going to handle that locally?
Correct. And so what we've seen at the State Board of Education level is really discussions around using more informative assessment measures. We know our teachers have a pretty good understanding of where our students are. Now that our English learners are returning to school, there's a lot within our adoption, especially at the elementary level benchmark, that really gives us an idea of where our students are, right? As it relates to their English language acquisition. And now it's incumbent upon us to really respond to, to that need.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos. Elizabeth?
Along those same lines, Mr. Gonzalez, can you explain to them now that we're in the red tier, how would that be advantageous for our AP teachers as far as giving more time to help them prepare for this test, as well as any other academic subject of a kid's choice?
Yeah, so with specific regard to AP teachers, in any given year, there are, many of our AP teachers engage in, in extra tutoring activities and, and things of that sort. We'll certainly be offering those as well this year. We also have a, a concrete piece of work that's been done just yesterday and today is around our small group cohort subs, which as you know, as we built those cohorts starting in October, they have provided a lot of opportunities for our students to be on sites. Since then, those, all of those subs at the secondary level that have, now that we're moving to another model, they're being, we've extended their assignments. So they're going to work directly with their site administrators to, to repurpose exactly what they, they'll be doing and the students they'll be working with. So we're committed to growing that, that pool of resource at all of our sites as well. But by extending their, their assignments, we have them on sites now ready to, to start working in, in a different capacity with students in this new model.
With, with many of our high school students or students in general getting, at least 35% of them getting Fs and Ds, how does this new model going to, to ensure that there will be improvement in their grades? Again, what do we do? 32% Fs and Ds?
Yeah, Dr. Lullis, the, the, the model itself, like any model, there, there's limitations. That's what we're talking about, right? There's constraints. The great thing about the model is actually the other areas that we're able to address, the socio-emotional. We, we now, we're going to, for the first time, you know, in, in 12 months, We now, we're going to, for the first time, you know, in 12 months, for the first time, we're going to put students face-to-face in front of their teacher, in front of counselors, in front of the administrators, in front of support staff. That is huge. I don't know how else I can understand. The teachers, the people that I've mentioned are going to be able to determine not only their academic needs that they have or deficiencies, but also their socio-emotional needs that they have. So one of the things that we've also done, and I want to give credit to both Ellen and Delia, with, we have now the learning recovery funds that the state is providing us. So we have, we have quite a bit of money. And so, so we've told principals, we're, don't, don't, there should not be a reason for not providing interventions for our students. And, and so, right now, there is a minimum, if you look at the schedule, there's a minimum of two days, but I can foresee easily students coming three days, four days, five days, six days, if they want to take advantage of the Saturday. So all those possibilities are going to happen, and that magic is going to happen because of the staff that's there working with them in person. So, and I'm also, I also want to say that it's not just now. This is going to continue throughout the summer, and these funds will take us from now to August of '22. And the state has provided $4.6 billion for school districts to do exactly just that, what you're asking about.
I'm for socio-emotional. But the thing is, how are you going to measure the impact of that? You know?
We need to get to the waiver, is that?
Yeah, if I can clarify something about tonight's action that the Board is going to take, is we are supporting the waiver. It's being supported by districts and counties across the state. You've heard it through CSBA, CTA, AXA, the huge organizations are also very supportive of this waiver. But at the end of the day, we need the State Board of Education to support this. That's what we're going to need.
Do you guys mind if I read the waiver request? I think it's important. Or the resolution. Resolution number 68, "In Support of a Waiver Request on Statewide Assessments." Whereas, "Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the Corona Norco Unified School District has been providing educational services to students in a variety of online platforms since March 2020. And whereas, the high case rates for COVID-19 in Riverside County have prevented the district from fully opening schools and classrooms for in-person instruction. And whereas, the district has continued to assess student progress during this time period of remote learning utilizing iReady diagnostics for reading and mathematics. And whereas, the district opened classrooms for schools for in-person instruction on March 1, 2021 for grades TK through 6. And whereas, educators are acutely aware of the mental health toll that the pandemic is having on students and believe that a high-stakes statewide assessment would exacerbate the stress on students. And whereas, the California State Board of Education has delegated authority to its executive director to develop an assessment waiver proposal to the United States Department of Education for the Board's consideration that focuses on a plan for assessments that provide data to parents and which monitors the progress of students. And whereas, the Riverside County Office of Education has joined with the Association of California School Administrators, the California School Boards Association, the California County Superintendent's Educational Services Association, the California Association of School Business Officials, the California Federation of Teachers, and the California Teachers Association to advocate for a waiver request that would suspend the administration of the statewide annual standardized summative assessments in English, language, arts, and mathematics in lieu of local and/or interim assessments to monitor student progress and report data to parents. Therefore, be it now resolved, the governing board of the Corona Norco Unified School District supports requesting the California State Board of Education to submit to the United States Department of Education a request for a waiver of the statewide annual standardized assessments as outlined above, is in favor of continuing to utilize local assessments to inform educational decisions to benefit students of the Corona Norco Unified School District, and authorizes Superintendent Samuel Berno Rostro, EDD, to convey this position to the State Board of Education." Yes?
I so move this initiative or this resolution.
Second?
Okay, are we hand-voting still? We don't have this. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Dr. Lullis?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
So this motion is passed and adopted the 16th day of March 2021, 5 to 0. Okay, now, the Board will move into closed session to discuss the following items: student expulsions, readmissions, admissions, public employee appointment pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6, public employee appointment, reassignment, and anticipated litigation and negotiations. We will be back shortly.